This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Mitchell.
Strobel.
Here.
T. Walt.
Here.
Van Hayden.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jean.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Monday, July 13th, 2015 session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday night session, the council conducts public hearings and sometimes public discussions in which we invite public comment and seek your thoughts about agenda items that are before us. Tonight, we do have some interesting topics of conversation with the public, including looking at a mobile food vendor ordinance that may -- that will be coming towards the end of July. We're going to get an update on our comprehensive plan. By law, we have to update our comprehensive plan every decade, and 2015 is the year that we have to do that. A committee has been working for a year on that update. Periodically, we get reports, and tonight is one of those nights that we'll have a report on that work. We'll end the evening by doing some internal work from an ad hoc committee about how we bring resolutions to council's attention. For those of you who are in chambers tonight, I welcome you, and also extend a welcome to those watching on community television or streaming live at cvctv.org. For those of you who do wish to speak tonight, we have a council protocol, which I will review for you in just over the next couple of minutes. When I introduce an agenda item, usually staff gives us our report, and council may ask a few questions, but then the item is open for public input. We do institute for fairness, the value of fairness, a five-minute speaking limit. That way, each person knows exactly how much time they have, and it's fair for everybody. So when you approach the podium, please begin by saying your name and your address. A red -- a light system helps you monitor your time. With a green light, a yellow light means you have a minute left, and a red light means that you're at the end of your five minutes. I will politely ask you to wrap up your comments if you've taken the five minutes, which you do not need to speak for a full five minutes, but they are there for you should you need that time to make your point. Once you're finished speaking, often council has questions, so if you would linger at the podium for just a moment, gives us a chance to meet a chance to ask if people have questions. Sometimes we ask clarifying questions, or we just want to probe a point a little bit more. We are not here to put you on the spot or to embarrass you. We're here to learn and clarify what the point is that you're trying to make. Usually, the questions help you make that point. And also, if you don't wish to speak, but you'd like to get us a message, there are written forms at the back of chambers on the table. They're on a blue piece of paper. You can write your comments and leave it at the back of chambers, and we will get those comments before our meeting tomorrow. If you need any help tonight, Ms. Meroll, who sits right up here, is available to assist you, which also there are agendas, printed agendas, at the back of chambers if you'd like to follow, follow along with how, how we're moving. Most people like to see when their item's up and kind of keep track of that, so they can get nervous and then relax when it's over, so. With that introduction, I think we are ready to begin our work for the evening, which we will begin with item number one, which is a public hearing on the proposed site plan in a P public district to allow a 95-foot wind turbine at CVCT West Campus. Mr. Noel.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Chippewa Valley Technical College has submitted a zoning application, a conditional use permit, that was approved by the Plan Commission already at their last meeting, and also a site plan application that's pertaining to a P public zone property, which is what the campus is zoned here, at their West Campus at 400 Campus Drive. The proposed location of this 95-foot tall wind turbine is right here. These trees would be removed, this row, in order to build, install the structure, and as this exhibit shows, the nearest home is over 1,700 feet away, which is up in this area here. So homes around the campus, they're fortunate to have a lot of land around the campus in order to deal with the wind turbine, but because this is such a small wind turbine, there really isn't any impact even very far away from the proposed location in terms of noise and shadow flicker that sometimes you see for larger wind turbines. So in terms of the conditional use permit that the Plan Commission approved, there was no negligible, or there's no negative impacts to adjacent properties. Again, a lot of their property is actually owned, it's the campus. So other than that, you just have to approve the site plan. The use was already approved by the Plan Commission, because it is P public zoning, it comes before you for site plan approval as well. Really, looking at the location. If you have any other questions, happy to answer those, and the applicant is also here.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Does the applicant wish to add to the presentation? No. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Noel? Councilmember Van Hayden?
Either you or the applicant. I guess what I'm curious about is, I realize this is a smaller wind turbine, and obviously, anything we can do for energy efficiency is always a wonderful thing, but have we done, or has anybody done, an impact analysis on what the impact would be on birds flying by? Because, you know, that's one of the major concerns, especially for the larger ones, if they're in a flight pattern. And the second follow-up on that is, if there would be an impact with the birds, who's responsible to clean up and who's responsible to take care of them?
Right. Well, the applicant can also address these questions, but usually, the bird situation is dealing with wind farms, where you've got a lot of different blades, you know, disrupting flight paths of birds. This is an isolated case, so I think the applicant also may be able to answer any of those questions if they would want to.
Good evening, Council. Adam Whelan, the Associate Dean of Agriculture and Energy at Chippewa Valley Technical College. I've been working with heirs and associates, Disa Wallsted, in order to submit this application. As far as environmental impact goes, the diameter of our turbine is 22 feet in diameter. It's very small in comparison to some of the diameters that are over 100 feet on some of the larger turbines. This is very low impact. In fact, when we look at the amount of size that this will take up in comparison to, for example, the, the high voltage power lines that are going right next to the, where this turbine will be, it's going to be about the same size. This is very, very low impact. As far as cleanup goes of birds, we'd be taking care of that on our end.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan.
Good.
There might be another question for you.
I'd be more than happy to answer anything. I know this turbine inside and out, I've been researching it for quite a long time.
Anything we want to know, huh? Councilmember Lewis has a question.
I was going to ask a similar question, in that I know when they cite the farms and things, they do have the DNR come in and they, they look at the flyways. With this one and the height, have you done any looking at, though, what is the average height that the geese that come off of the water just down there, and they love to fly that way, being a goose hunter, I know where they head out of town. They're going to fly this direction. Has anyone looked at the height restrictions and done any study on units' size?
As far as specifically, as far as specifically to geese, we have not had a chance to do any of that research at this time.
Councilmember Strobel.
And I have a question, and you might be able to answer the first part, and maybe Mr. Noel will be able to answer the second part. Do you have any future plans for more turbines on this site?
At this time, we just have plans for one wind turbine. I believe that was mentioned at the Plan Commission meeting, that any subsequent turbines, we'd have to go through this entire process again, so that you would have the full opportunity to weigh in on that if we ever do decide to do more than one. But at this point in time, we do just plan on doing one. Our goal with this is that we're going to be able to train our technicians, so that they can utilize and learn on this one turbine. They can do the same with one as they can with multiple, so we'll, at this time, be keeping it just to one wind turbine.
And then the second half of that question from Mr. Noel, I think you hit on it a little bit. If he could just explain the process, that it would, if we approve the site plan for this, if they want to have more, they have to come back through for another site plan? And how many potentially could they have on that site?
Yeah, I don't know about that quite, the latter question, about how many you can put on there, but yeah, any amendment would require, or any new wind turbine would require an amendment to the conditional use permit, and then also, because you're making a physical change to the property, also, the site plan would have to be amended, too, that you would, again, get a chance to look at that additional wind turbine, or two, or three, or depending on. I mean, we've done our own site analysis on wind in the Chippewa Valley. There's not a lot of great sites. I think they're very interested, because it's the Energy Center campus, also the technology. I'm not sure what the wind speeds are at, you know, 95 or 106 feet tall, but more or less, the Chippewa Valley isn't blessed with a lot of, you know, strong wind currents. On hills and ridge tops, yes, but, so, you know, we wish them the best on this project, but I think it's, you know, definitely an educational piece, and they can also speak to that fact as well, if you'd like more information, but.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes. Councilmember Lewis has a follow-up question.
This one might be more for the applicant. I know nationally, there is a big problem with people who are trying to go off the grid, and power companies not allowing them then to hook up, or actually having surcharges, things like that that go along with it. Have you been in contact with Northern, well, it's not Northern States, Excel now, to, to find out, are they going to allow you to do that, and what impact that might have? I love it as a training thing, and I think that's great. I'm just wondering about that, and I have a follow-up question on a different subject, too.
So our contact at Excel Energy is Oscar, and Oscar and I have been working closely to work the interconnection agreement. This is what we call a grid time unit, which means that it's connected directly to our power grid, which is definitely, which is connected to theirs. In order to do that, then, any overage of power that we might create would then go to the Excel Energy lines, and we'd be credited. However, when you look at the maintenance energy that's used at the Energy Education Center for running our geothermal, our lights, our circulating fans, we do not anticipate at all to ever exceed the amount of energy produced versus the energy that we're using, and that is also in conjunction with some of the solar energy that we're generating. So yes, we do have those interconnection agreements already in the works, and we're very, very much in a good relationship with Oscar and Excel Energy. We don't have any concerns, and I'm at the Oscar again this morning, just to confirm everything.
Okay. The other question is, is there any issue with stray voltage on a wind turbine?
We actually did a questionnaire to our vendor about this, about the electromagnetic interference, and again, this is a small-scale wind turbine, and we do not have any electromagnetic interference on a wind turbine this size.
I see that you report references that, that result.
Yep.
Noise and electromagnetic interference. Any other? Oh, Councilmember Strobel.
This is just maybe a question from Mr. Noel or Mr. Tufti. I noticed in here that there's no height restrictions or setback requirements on P public, and I wonder if anybody could speak to that? Is it, if, my understanding from reading this is if it hadn't been in the airport flyway, airport flyway, that it could be higher, potentially?
Yeah, the P, and Darrell can comment, too, if I'm off, but the P public, you know, is very unique, and we really use sound judgments of zoning and planning when it look, when we look at a particular site, whether it's, you know, adjacent to residential neighborhood or, so those, those principles of those other zone properties nearby guide us in terms of how we should look at a proposal, say, on a P public property, but it's very flexible that way, because usually, it's, you know, a municipal-type operation on a, on a P public or a park, or, you know, an institution like this. So, Darrell, did I get it right?
Thank you, Mr. Noel, for entertaining our questions. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to comment on the proposed site plan for a wind turbine? Anyone here for this issue? I see none, so the chair will close item number, number one. Thank you for your input. Item two on our agenda begins a series of presentations, the first of which is a presentation of the proposed mobile food truck policy. Ms. Coughlin.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Coughlin, and I'm with the Economic Development Division with the City of Eau Claire, and I am here today to present a proposal for a mobile food truck policy. This is a policy that was drafted by the Economic Policy Advisory Committee, and currently, mobile food truck vendors may only operate on private property as part of a special event, or private property or as a part of a special event, and there have been requests to allow mobile food truck vendors to operate and sell in more areas of Eau Claire. So EPAC has drafted a mobile food truck policy that could make this possible. The proposed policy would serve as a test run to determine the demand for food trucks and to operate on public property. So this is a list of all those that have been involved in the creation of this proposed policy. I am here representing the Economic Development Division, and KT Gallagher is here to represent the Health Department, as well as Phil Fever representing Parks and Recreation. Licensing was also involved in this process, and again, EPAC was also included and has spent the past four meetings discussing this and drafting this proposed policy. So we're here to answer any of your questions at the end of the presentation, if you have So this policy would serve as a guideline for existing and future mobile food truck vendors. This policy includes consequences of violations of this policy or violations of the City County Health Department. This policy would designate exact locations that the mobile food truck vendors could operate in, selected city parks. Signs would also be installed to designate their locations in these parks and areas. Parks would include the Phoenix Park Farmers Market area, Owen Park, there's two different lots that we're thinking, and the Eau Claire Soccer Park parking lot. So now, I will just go over some of the maps and the areas that we are proposing. So this is the Phoenix Park Farmers Market area. As you can see, we have two designated spots right here. It'd be out of the way of any traffic, and it's located near the restrooms. Customers could line up on the grassy area to be safe, and there's also receptacles around this area. In Owen Park Lot 1, the one near the playground, we chose the stall near the end and towards the grassy area, again, to stay out of the way of any traffic. They can line up on the grassy area and get their food. Food vendors are supposed to have receptacles there, and then, once they're done, they could use the city park receptacles if they needed, but there should be receptacles provided by the vendor. The second lot in Owen Park is the one by the tennis courts, and again, we picked a stall that's right on the end, so people could line up on the grassy area. And then, this is just an overview of the soccer park. So we've got the Eau Claire Sports Center right here, and then we have restrooms here, and then our proposal is right here. I want a more zoomed-in version of that. Again, the sports center is here, restrooms are here, so we would have them right here. We'd have two proposed spots right there. They'd be very close to the restrooms, so they could use that and wash up if they need to. Again, they would provide their own receptacles, and they'd be out of the way of any incoming traffic or outgoing traffic. So as you may have seen, there were some times included with each of those maps. You're only allowed to be in parks until 11:00 PM, but we decided that some of these parks that are more in residential areas, they would only be allowed to be there till 8:00 PM. So for Phoenix Park, we are proposing 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Owen Park Lot 1, the one near the playground, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then Owen Park Lot 2, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, maybe to cater some of that late-night water street crowd. And then the Eau Claire Soccer Park, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, again, because it's in a residential area. The food vendors will be required to keep a mobile log documenting dates, times, and locations that they are operating there. Vendors may not operate one hour before, during, or one hour after scheduled events or games. We don't want to take away from any concessions, so we're trying to be very careful about that. Attached in the policy, there are some links to city calendars of events that are going on, and it will be their responsibility to keep updated and look what's going on, to make sure that they can operate around those times. In order for this policy to take effect, a permit and permit food truck sales in city parks, ordinance number 9.76.100 will need to be amended. This ordinance prohibits commercial enterprises and parks, but the amendment will specifically permit food trucks to sell in the designated parking spaces during the specified times permitted by this proposed policy. So some potential future sites. If this test run is successful and embraced by the community, they could be any of these established neighborhoods that you see here, or any future neighborhoods, or designated streets and parking spaces, and these spaces would have regulations for a certain distance to be from other brick-and-mortar restaurants or any right-of-ways. Some other restrictions. Establishments are prohibited from parking within 300 feet of a public park, with the exception of defined parks found on the first page, unless permission has been granted as part of or in association with a festival or event permitted by the organizer. Establishments are prohibited from selling within 300 feet of a special event, such as the summer concert series on Thursday nights or other musical events, the farmer's market, soccer games that have concessions open, and other scheduled events throughout the year. Establishments are prohibited from selling one hour before, during, and one hour after any of these events or games that are scheduled, and they are not allowed to sell from non-designated spots, and alcohol sales are prohibited. Another document that will be involved with this policy is the Mobile Food Establishment Guidelines with the Eau Claire City County Health Department, so this is a document that they already had put together, so it's something that we would include. It would cover things such as safety and other guidelines that they have, so it would have specific information on definitions, licenses that are required, requirements for their service base or truck, and additional rules and guidelines to follow. All licensing information pertaining to attaining a mobile food truck license and a service base license will be included, as well as the fees the vendor will need to And this is just the cover page before they can look at the maps to see where they can operate. The map shown earlier will be included along with the times of operation. The cover page of this map reiterates that vendors must operate on a first-come, first-served basis, and that they may not operate one hour prior, during, or one hour after a scheduled This proposed policy gives current and future entrepreneurs opportunities to start their business. There are currently eight vendors with mobile food licenses that would benefit from this proposed policy. Through research, we have found that there's a growing interest to begin mobile food trucks, but due to the limitations of operation locations, they choose to not get licensed. When speaking with other cities, we have learned that mobile food trucks bring more foot traffic out to different areas of the city, and also, through research, we found that many success stories of mobile food trucks evolving into brick-and-mortar restaurants. Any questions?
Probably we have a few. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation tonight, too, and the work that you've put into this. Trying to get an understanding of, I have a number of questions, but I'll just throw out the first one, but about not being able to have the food trucks one hour before, present or one hour after a given event, and can you kind of talk about that? Because I'm sure that that was a, maybe, there was a lot of discussion that went into that timeframe, and can you just talk about how that came to be?
Sure. I did a lot of research on other cities and their policies and guidelines and things like that. We found that if there's other events going on, you know, there's a lot of setup, and there's takedown, and there's concessions, and we don't want to take away from that, so we want to be very careful to let them have their opportunity to make their money before the mobile food trucks can kind of come in and, you know, cater to their customers, too, so.
Well, we'll move on. Okay. Councilmember Strobel?
I might have a follow-up on that one. So they get a permit, it's for a year, and they can park in these, these parks. If, if you had someone that was, you wanted a mobile, mobile food truck like at Music on Thursday nights, do they have to get a separate permit for that?
They would need approval by the event organizer, so through Volume 1, or whoever's putting on that specific event, they would have to just be a part of that event, and they'd go through that organization.
Okay. And then, one more question here. I noticed the, the times they have to leave the park is a set time, and how soon can they get there to set up? Because it says there's a limited number of spots, it's a first-come, first-served basis, and I know there's eight vendors there, and there's only a couple of spots at Phoenix Park. How do you, how do you police or enforce something like that?
As of right now, we would like to try a first-come, first-served basis. If that doesn't pan out the way we'd like it to, we would have to put some enforcement rules on that. But as of right now, we'd like to do first-come, first-serve, and from what I'm gathering from other mobile food trucks, they seem to all have a pretty good relationship, so I don't foresee it being a problem, but if it were, then we would put some enforcement on that.
Okay. We'll move on to Councilmember Lewis and get back to, once we reach our two-question limit.
On the, you started talking about enforcement, and I think both of my questions are on that part of it. How are you actually going to enforce this? Is it going to be regularly patrolled, that the trucks are there, that they actually are licensed? And what happens if you show up and somebody is taking a spot and they don't have a valid license anymore? Who's checking this and how often?
Well, we will have Parks and Rec kind of keeping an eye on the situation, looking at their cleanup, and I think at the same time, they can kind of monitor that as well. If they're in violation of anything in this policy or the guidelines of the Health Department, we would have a right to not allow them to operate in the parks, and the Health Department has their own consequences.
Okay. And I mean, it's my follow-up question is, what actually are the penalties? So what if somebody decides the line is long, and they're still serving food a half an hour before the ballgame starts because there's people in line? Is that a penalty, and who would enforce that? And what would, what would, how would they be penalized? Is it monetary? Is it reification of license? What would you do when somebody does violate one of the policies?
If it is violated, I guess it would depend on the severity and how much control they had over it, but we would just revoke their right to operate in that park or area.
And as you said, the Health Department has its own consequences related to healthy food and
Yes.
... disposal of food waste and
Yes.
... whatnot, which are, I think, fines. Other, we have room for a few more questions before we get to the public. Councilmember T. Walt?
Thank you, Council President Kincaid. My question is, I understood the part about the events. I didn't quite understand the term "games" when it comes to the Eau Claire soccer fields, because that means I can come after everyone's gone with my, so give me a, what makes that a scheduled game? And can they really track it, or are people practicing? Can you speak to that question?
Sure. So there are tournaments that go on, maybe Saturday mornings, there's a lot of kids that play early-morning Saturday games, or there's maybe weekend events going on, and those are the kind of scheduled games we're talking about. And if their concessions is open, then they would know not to operate there, because they'd be taking sales away from that organized event or game.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You can? You have one more question?
Just to, the, I'll, I want, so, the, the timing, this, this, the timing that was set on the different parks, can you talk about why some are 8:00 and why some are 11:00? Because if I think about the soccer park, and you said that was a residential area, but where it's located is not even close to residential areas, and I'm trying to get an understanding for how the times were set, park by park? Because it seems like it might be a worthwhile thing to just say, it's always from 10:00 until 11:00 in the evening?
Okay. Across the street from the soccer park, there are like apartments in condo-type areas, and since the food trucks are kind of noisy, if they have their own power going, we just wanted to be respectful of that, you know, if they're trying to get kids to bed or something like that. So we'd like to propose, starting at 8:00, if we see a need for it to go longer, then, you know, after we talk to the food vendors, then we could look at doing that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Coughlin. We will now invite the public to, to weigh in if there are any comments, and then we can get back to council questions, so I assume you'll be around.
Yes, thank you very much.
Is anyone here to speak, then, to this issue?
Hi, my name's Eric Nelson. I own the coffee grounds here in town, but I'm also a partner with Tom Brenneman and his family, Tutabenny Wood Fire Pizza. I appreciate all of the work that Elaine and her committee has gone through, but one of the things that I heard her say the whole time she talked is, restrictions, 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 restrictions. There's only eight spots in the whole city of Eau Claire of 100,000 people in this area that a food truck could go. I find that, hopefully, absurd. I think if you go to other cities in the United States, you see food trucks on every street. street. You see them up and down the street. Go to Niklet Mall in the Twin Cities at noon, there's 20 food trucks up and down that street. Why? Because the people want them. Yes, is it competition for brick and mortar? It is. I have a brick and mortar place. But it also is the birthplace of a lot of brick and mortar stores. It's a low-expense way to get into the food business. People find out it's successful, they develop a following, they start their own restaurant. I guess I would like to see Eau Claire take a very completely different approach than what the committee has said. Let's allow food trucks in the city. Let's allow the, we've, expand our food quality, expand what people want in this town. We're in our third year, and we've found our business just keeps growing, and growing, and growing. People want it. I just came from a catered event that we did tonight with our pizza oven, and people want that. They want the diversity, they want to be able to meet the owners, they want to see people, they want to stop on their way from an activity. I agree, it's like, why would you go to the soccer park an hour after the soccer game? People won't go there. They want, people want to make food trucks their activity for that evening, for that afternoon, things like that. So I guess I'd hope that they would, you know, use some of the things in the committee's findings, but also expand it. You know, next time you're traveling to a bigger city, just go look at the food trucks that line, parking lots, streets, you know, they're in, they're all over, is basically what it's come down to. And I really hope that Eau Claire would take an open mind and just allow food trucks, penalize the people who are doing it wrong, but allow the people who are doing it right to grow their businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I see a couple of questions.
Yes.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I have the pleasure of serving on this committee, and so wanted to just speak a little bit and engage you a little bit. I am with you. I totally agree. We should open up our minds and do more. I'm from the Bay Area. My father started a small business, and he worked outside of a public transportation station, and right next to a food juicer who now has a large juicing business in the Bay Area, in a building, employs lots of people, blah, blah, blah. I think that some of the approach with this was trying to just do a first foray into food trucks in Eau Claire, and so I anticipate, and I hope everything goes well in the future, to say, okay, yep, let's take our next step. So I guess my question for you, since we're supposed to be asking questions, is, do you have places in mind that you're hoping to see in the future? And/or would you be willing to write some places down, write some locations down that you think would be a good fit, and either submit them to our city manager's office, or economic development office, or myself?
Yeah, absolutely. I would love to be able to take the time to sit down and discuss this with the committee on how we, how food, as one of the eight vendors, and mobile food vendors, envisions what's going on. You know, we all have full-time jobs, and I say, my wife and I, and Tom and his wife, it allows their three kids and some of their buddies to have a great summer job. You know, they go out and make pizzas. We'd love to be able to partner with other businesses in town that maybe that don't have a restaurant license. An example would be like The Firehouse. You know, they don't have food there, but they want to bring people there. They don't want people just to come there just to drink. If they could incorporate food into that, and I'm not saying it's me, I mean, there's a great, you know, there's burritos, there's hot dogs, there's all sorts of barbecue, there's so many other opportunities that could do that, and I think could be very valuable. And I think we could pick some spots that would make it worth our while to go to. You know, right now, I look at the eight spots, and I'm going, I don't know, Tom and I were kind of going, I don't know if I'd go to any of them, because there's never, there's not going to be people there, is what it comes down to. So, we need people. You know, we need people to be there, and we can draw more people there once you're there. And again, I've been very fortunate to go to a lot of different places in the United States. And some of the places we go to, we only go because there are food trucks there. Or you're driving along, you see a food truck, you stop, because it's part of what the area is. And again, I love, you know, McDonald's is a hope, clearly, I think, but we're all about, you know, using local vendors, local suppliers, giving, in an Eau Claire-Chippewa Valley feel.
Thank you for any feedback. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, you brought something up, and maybe you know the answer, or Ms. Coughlin knows the answer. Were any of the local vendors included in the discussion of this policy, or is this kind of the first?
You know, as one of the eight, I know we were not. I don't know about the other seven, so I can't answer that. That would be up to Elaine.
Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. That was the question I was going to ask, is about the, if we were going to allow it on the streets and stuff. And so from your perspective, would you, it sounds like you would propose allowing vendors everywhere?
You know, when you go around the United States, that's pretty much what they do. They park up, they pull up into the street, you get served on a sidewalk, you grab your whatever it may be, and away you walk. It's just kind of the way that the food business, the food in general, is evolving. It's going away from these million-dollar brick and mortar things that become harder and harder, and the $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 food trucks that allow people to start a business without being so capital-intensive, and then growing it from that business into maybe a brick and mortar spot, once they've got a following, once they've got people that like their product. You know, and it's, I guess it's, if it isn't any good, it's going to fail. So, plain and simple.
Well, thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jim Davis, and to reiterate pretty much what this gentleman said, all the way. I own a mobile food truck in town. It's my second year in business. I find that I'm choked with where I can go, and what times, and who I can serve at what times. Without private property inviting us in, we don't get much business. So I totally agree, open up the town, definitely regulate it as needed, and see what happens. That's basically all I've got.
Questions for Mr. Davis? I see none right now. Thank you for your input.
Good evening, council. My name is Miles Casey. We are just starting a food truck right now. We're going to be licensing our food truck next week, or we intend to. And we are very much in support of what Mr. Nelson and this whole thing is, but it needs to be bigger, it needs to be more latitude for us to grow our businesses. There are a lot of pockets in the Eau Claire area where there's a lot of industry, excuse me, but there's no restaurant. Employees have to get in a car and drive somewhere, but they don't have, they only have a half hour. They don't have the luxury of getting in a car and driving a half hour, getting their food, getting back, and then going back to work. So allowing it to be more open, and allowing it to expand it to these, more than these isolated locations, would help these people, these employees in these pockets where there isn't anything for sometimes up to a mile. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Councilmember Lewis has a question?
There was a discussion earlier that if it's in the parks, they were going to have closing times of 8:00 or 11:00. And if you are out in the city and you could park wherever, what do you think the timeframes are of people that would actually use a food truck? Having gone to them a lot when I'm out of town also, I just never remember going to them later in the evening, their mealtime. But what are your thoughts on how long you need to serve food?
I would have to say that it would, it would depend on the area. You have industrial areas where there's several different, you know, manufacturing facilities or something. Maybe let them stay open a little longer for the simple fact, you have second-shift people that are working, you know? They're working a 3 to 11 shift. If you guys shut down at 8:00, or if you shut us down at 8:00, well, then you might miss some of that lunch break or something, and, or they might want to grab something on the way home. So it would depend on where the location is. 8:00 on residential areas, like she's proposed, that's not a bad idea, because she is right. There are, there are some negative things, you know, with generators and such, that we have to run to keep things going, you know? So it would be, it would have to be looked at a little closer, so. But I'm focusing more on where there are a cluster of manufacturing industrial areas where people don't want to brown-bag it anymore. And the, I think we've all had sandwiches out of the vending machine, and they're not exactly something that wants me, keep me going for four hours after work, and, you know, four more hours of work, so.
Thank you. Is there another question?
If it was opened up in the community, how much space, you know, okay, these vehicles, what size are they in? How much space would you take up when you pull into them?
My trailer is a little bit bigger. I would need about 20 feet. So, and then, you know, if there's, you know, a landing for people to come to the window or whatnot, so my trailer's just under 20 feet, so.
So you could pull up on a curve, I'll use The Firehouse for an example, pull up in front of The Firehouse, park there on the street, assuming there was space available?
Absolutely.
There may or may not be.
Absolutely. And the way my trailer is situated, the food vending's on the passenger side, so it's on the sidewalk side, so we can literally pull up along, like they said, along the sidewalk and food vend, and we wouldn't have to worry about people walking out into the street and around the truck and worrying about traffic or anything like that. We did that on purpose, so.
Councilmember Klinkamer has a question?
Oh, yes.
In serving to manufacturing locations that are not adjacent or conveniently located to restaurants, do you anticipate that you'd have difficulty getting permission from those industrial manufacturers to use their private property to park? Or do you just want the latitude of being able to park on public streets so that you don't have to interact with the management of those places?
That's a great question, and what you have to look at is, when you're at a large manufacturing facility, there are liabilities that they don't want to, they don't want that trailer on their property. They don't want, you're taking up, you're taking up their employees' parking or whatnot. And I know, you know, devil's advocate, you say, well, we're taking up city parking, but, you know, it, there's a lot of, you would have to jump not only through the licensing process, but you would also have to try to contact the right person in that facility, and sometimes that decision-maker is not in Eau Claire. It's somewhere else, and it's a tedious process. So opening it up on a city street would allow that person to conveniently do it without affecting that manufacturer, that industrial place.
Okay, thank you. We're learning a lot. Next.
Hi, I'm Ralph Kuim with Bubbles Barbecue, and I was just gonna, how do I get this on, up on the screen here, over here?
Mr. Nelson, we'll help you read that. I'll lay it right here.
I just have a picture on our phone of our food truck, or of the food truck I work with, and just to see, you know, that it's not like a fly-by-night operation or something that we, the company's put a lot of money into the truck. The cool part about the trucks are, this truck has hot water, three-basin sink to wash in, hand sinks, it has refrigeration, it has freezer space, it's a complete kitchen. And actually, I've owned restaurants before, and this truck is actually larger than my first kitchen I cooked in, so it's kind of like, and it's a little bit cooler, actually, with the air conditioning unit on top. So, and just to, in retrospect, to talk to some of the ideas that they were talking about here, I know it's a lot to ask to open the door, Pandora's Box to say, let us park everywhere. And I know it's hard to put limits on things, or to come up with 10 areas or 20 areas. So I think the committee that's been studying it's done a great job to at least talk about opening the door. One thing that I'd like to talk about, too, is the space numbers, and I wasn't aware of this until I saw it on the news, and just decided to come tonight. We were talking about food trucks in other cities. A lot of times, I bought my truck in, the truck was purchased in Florida, and when we went down there to pick it up, the, they had several parks where they'd have a food truck night. So they'd have six, eight, 10 trucks in the park at night, not just one spot. It's kind of like we've created a mall, or a strip mall. We don't have one shoe store that we allow, like in Oakwood Mall. We put several shoe stores, several food places in a mall, so people can come out and have choices. So to say, well, the hot dog truck, or the barbecue truck, or the pizza place is set up tonight, I don't want pizza. You know, to open up maybe one side of the parking lot on, you know, with the pictures, one side of the parking lot to allow six or eight food trucks, maybe that's not opening Pandora's Box to have that. The other areas, we work with several businesses that we do, they do allow us on their property, but there are some spots where it would be nice to be external to them, so we could get multiple businesses involved. Because sometimes, you know, walking 200 yards at lunch is too far for somebody, you know? Even though some other people are walking two miles at lunch or something like that. So the number of spaces, you know, like a food court, you know, is kind of a neat idea, maybe even if you guys are reluctant to open the doors, which, you know, the city of La Crosse has opened the door and allowed food trucks on their city streets, as long as you're properly licensed and properly parked, you know? So, and then there was some talk about Niklet Mall, too, and I love to go up there and eat, gives you several different choices. The other thing with the sound kind of came up here, too, and there's a generator, there are generators that run, but they're like a lawnmower motor. So we're not talking, you know, like a semi-truck revving its engine or something for several hours at a time. It's the din, I know I live in a residential area, there's a din of lawnmowers going outside my window every night. So that's, you know, that's kind of, I think that's supplemental, it's something that you probably wouldn't want if it's right outside your house, but it's not a terrible thing. We were just talking, we should have had the trucks pulled up out front tonight, so you guys could inspect them, you know, so you could see the quality. I've seen the quality, there's very nice trucks, very nice graphics, and I tell you what, the public will get rid of people that don't maintain their trucks, and that don't have clean trucks. We've been, Bubbles Barbecue has been at the Chippewa Fair for two years, and every year, the people say, do you know why we bought food here? And we say, because it's good, and they said, no, because your truck's clean. So, you know, there's been a lot of that. And then just one other thing I had put on here, too, as a note, for the events, you know, like we were talking about, I think there's, and I'm not aware of it as much, but Blues in the Park on Tuesday night, I think, right, Music in the Park? So to get, to get permission from the event organizer or something, it's a public park, it's kind of difficult, because then that event organizer has kind of a little stranglehold on who can be there and who can't be there. If there's space there, why do we limit it? You know, Music in the Park, why do we limit it to two or three vendors, you know, that can make $3,000 or $4,000 in a night, when maybe five vendors can make $500 or $700 or $800? You know, who knows what the amount of money everybody else is making? But I think more trucks will bring more people, and I think that's not, that's a positive thing, too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kuim. Couple of questions. Councilmember Klinkamer?
Thank you for your presentation.
Sure, thank you.
Talking about the difficulty of walking a couple hundred yards for something to eat, in terms of the restrictions that have been talked about so far, do you have issues with the limitations as to the distance from a restaurant? Or do you feel you should be able to park in front of them, or across the street from them?
And that's what we're, you know, when you open Pandora's Box, I, you know, I don't, to be truthfully honest with you, I don't know what the right answer is at, personally. If I was running the food truck that day, I, or as my owner would say, you know, we're not going to pull up in front of Joe's Taco Place and sell tacos, or we're not even going to pull up in front of Joe's Taco Place and try to sell barbecue. I mean, and I know there needs to be limitations, because there probably is somebody that would be willing to do that. So, you know, there's designated areas where you can pull multiples up, maybe there's one street in downtown Eau Claire you can pull up, where there's not restaurants for two blocks, you know, so people have a choice. So, you know, no, I don't believe that you should be able to pull right up in front of Pizza Plus and try to sell pizza or barbecue to them, no.
Councilmember Lewis?
We're talking about when they sho-
Sure, we're talking about when they showed the diagrams, that your food truck would get at least one parking spot. How many other parking spots would go along with that? Is, how many people are in a food truck at any given time? Would they need parking places also that?
Well, a lot of times, I could, I probably can speak for myself and not for the others fully. You know, our, the truck, the Bubbles Barbecue truck is 8 by 16, so it would completely fill a parking spot, and then you'd need the window outside. You know, the diagram, the way, the way it was set up, we, it's pulled with a truck, so the truck would probably unhitch and go park in a spot. On any given night, like at a big event, even at the fair, we have three people, you know, maybe four, and usually everybody comes together, you know, because we get their setup, serve the meal, and then clean up and go home. So, you know, there's probably another spot. I know, like Davis Dog's is a truck, so they actually just pull the truck in, they don't have a support vehicle or a, you know, a truck that pulls it. So, you know, it's kind of varying depending on what's going on. I don't think that they would take up that much room, and it's not like that anybody, I mean, we don't like pitch a tent and have a, you know, a break room or anything outside like that, too, so. How much, they wanted one at the fair this year, though, with outback with a cool area to sit, so, yeah.
Did you have another question? Okay, thank you.
But thank you very much for revisiting this and possibly opening the door, because I think it's something that really needs to be addressed, so thank you very much.
Anyone else here to speak about the policy?
Hello, my name is George Ortiz. I am the owner of Gordo's Food Truck, and I think the opening of the parks would be a great idea, but opening up the city to us would be amazing, because we can hop around and, like everybody else was saying, you know, hit up other businesses and places where, where there are a lot of people. And we build a following, so we, you know, people follow us around, they come to wherever we're at. So it wouldn't be that hard to get people to come to the park, but restricting us from a park where, like, I know the, the one field, not the, not the sports arena, but the other one, there's, there's no concession stand there. So if there was games, like the rugby from the college and stuff going on, I mean, they're not getting food either way, and if we weren't allowed to serve there, I mean, it wouldn't make point, because after they're gone, then there's nobody there, you know? And, but I, I really do think that opening up the city to us would be a great idea. We wouldn't park in residential areas, at least I know I wouldn't, because, I mean, the people are going to just kick us out, they're going to complain about the noise and, but, and parking in front of a restaurant, we can't compete with a restaurant, because they can, you can sit there, and it wouldn't make sense to park in front of a restaurant and try to sell food to their customers. You know, we're not, we're not there to, like, steal customers from people, at least I'm there to, you know, to cook for people. You know, I really enjoy talking to my customer as I cook for them, and I think that's, that's one of the biggest things that I enjoy about having a food truck, and what I think most people do is, is, you know, you're basically inviting people over and cooking for them one-on-one, and that's what I get the feeling from. And that's why, I just, I just wanted to say that opening the city to us would be great, I think.
Might have a question for you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Worthman.
Just, were you referencing Bollinger Field?
Yes, Bollinger Field, yep.
So there's, and there's no concession and?
I've never seen a concession stand there, no. And I know we had tried to, when we were opening up, we had talked to the university, but they have, they own, or Cisco, or, they do their food for them, and they said we weren't allowed to park there.
Sure.
And I see no further questions.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, we've learned a lot from your fun and passionate group. We had no idea. It's great. We'll see what happens. I think this is the beginning of a beautiful relationship, I guess. We'll see what happens from this point forward. Thank you so much for taking the time to teach us and give us your passionate input, you're obviously a close and respectful group, so we enjoyed hearing from you. Councilmember Klinkamer also has a speech to make, I think, or a question.
I certainly hope I don't have a speech, but I do have a question for Ms. Coughlin.
Ms. Coughlin.
Having participated in a lot of the discussions at EPAC, refresh my memory, because I know we talked at length about allowing them on public streets. Tell me again why we decided not to do it at this time.
This will serve as a test run, so kind of like we said earlier, baby steps. We want to see if the community embraces this and see how things go, and make sure the relationship builds and is doing okay before we would open it up, you know, make sure that they're following all the rules and being responsible, which I'm sure they would, but just kind of like a stepping stone to maybe address that in the future.
Councilmember DeWolff?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Coughlin and Mr. Schatz, for helping our committee think about this issue. I think another part was, we had a learning moment, which we haven't discussed about as a committee, because we learned afterward. We thought that this baby step was actually going to be able to be accommodated with just internally a staff decision, and so we thought that this was that first step. And then knowing it would take time to do ordinance changes would take some more time. So then we learned, when we put this on the agenda, that actually we do need an ordinance change, which we are pursuing. So I think the spirit was to try to do something as soon as possible and as nimbly as possible, and then take time to develop the proper ordinance to accommodate this request. And so here we are, we all are, we all learned tonight, and it's really great to have your feedback and, and just your enthusiasm for this. So, thank you to everybody tonight.
Councilmember DeWolff?
Just a follow-up on what we call the definition of a game, like soccer park. There's a lot of times up at the soccer park, it's really not formal games, but there's games being played, because there's groups go up there and will organize their own games. Is that a definition of a game? Are we just talking games that are part of the organization of the tournaments, et cetera?
Yes, anything that's a part of a tournament, or basically anything that has concessions with it. I mean, if there's not concessions, they're not taking sales away from anyone, they're free to sell there. So anything that's scheduled on the city calendar that we know will have concessions, they would not be able to operate there. But otherwise, if someone just has a pickup game and they see them, they want to pull an insult to them, that's just fine.
Okay, so like on a many Fridays and Saturdays up there, when there's no organized tournaments and there's thousands of kids up there playing, they can go up there and utilize their services.
Correct.
Councilmember DeWolff?
Yes, has your department looked at the La Crosse ordinance and what they've done?
I've actually just learned of the La Crosse ordinance. Right before the meeting, I heard that Green Bay also just allowed their food trucks to operate on their streets, so very interested in that, want to talk with them, I have a contact there. So, you know, once we got through this process, that was going to be our next step.
And just a follow-up, will, as you go forward with writing your ordinance, is there, it sounded like some of them were open to it, but bringing in your current local vendors just to talk to them about what they see and what maybe you're not thinking about and things like that?
Yes, and now that we have a lot of their contact information, that will be helpful.
Councilmember Worthman?
Yeah, just a couple of things to clarify, that the soccer games, I'm assuming those are special events, is that correct? If it's a tournament, that's a special event, or no? Not necessarily? Someone more.
What we talked about are the organized leagues, when ASO and United turn, have their tournaments and leagues, and also if there are any special events, like if there's a boomerang special event at the soccer park, or a coup tournament, that those would be, those are either special events, or they're groups that we have, that the city has leases with.
Sure.
Use agreements. So the other, the other groups that would be, and there are traditionally concession stands available for those, for those leagues and those tournaments, but that, but what is wide open, and there is no concessions for, would be the drop-in, the recreational players that are up there at night at the conclusion of, of United or ASO leagues, or on Sundays, Sunday's a very busy, busy park, and it has no affiliation with ASO or United or any organized tournament, so that, there's no concessions up there. So this would provide an opportunity to have concessions for those, those drop-in recreational events.
That's helpful, thank you.
Councilmember Tewolff?
Thank you, Council President Kincaid. I'd like to just make a general comment, too, because when I was enjoying the rain and sleet of watching my kids play soccer, some of those ASOs were similar, we had concessions planned, and then the group didn't show up. So we had a lot of times where there was nothing to offer the kids, you know, we had orange slices and whatever else we had, but it was not a guaranteed fixture there. And my general comment, if I may, you know, we want to look at growing Eau Claire, and I'll ask you to consider this, but not only do we want to stimulate businesses, but we want to provide an environment that they can succeed in. So if we have it too restrictive, my fear is, it can't be something they can succeed at. There's a minimum number.
Sure.
And then there's Pandora's Box as well. I'll let you qualify those.
Thank you.
Councilmember Worthman?
I want to echo that exact comment and say, I feel like we need to sort of reach a threshold to figure out whether this first step is a good, is a big enough step to see how well it works. And, and I wonder if, right now, as it's proposed, it might be a little restrictive in terms of really figuring that out. So, and I would be supportive of going a little bit further.
Mr. City Amender?
I did participate with the EPAC discussion, and one of the things that staff talked about internally as far as parking spaces, is just some of the parking inventory that's going on in our community, at least for the next year or so, as the ramp gets constructed, and we have a lot more businesses, our employees utilizing surface, street parking. So while I, I think it's great that we open up our city to some of these other potentials, not sure if this summer, or maybe even early part of next year is the best time to do that, in light of all of the employees that have been moved onto city streets as we construct a new ramp.
Councilmember Tewolff?
Just one more point I'd like to bring up. This fine physique that you see before you is supported by the vending machine wheel. Some people can rub two sticks together, pack a lunch. As a, as one who works at a business and we don't have that opportunity to have food close, I want to say, also look at that expansion for that industrial application, people on second, third shift, or first, there's a lot of time restrictions, sometimes traffic restrictions, that even though it's not that far, it exceeds the time. So maybe two separate thoughts is, well, what do we do with parks, and what do we do with those industrial businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. And since we've mushed into a question period, what, what did you envision as a short time frame, this testing frame, did you have a?
I envisioned that they would be able to operate in these parks, and people in the community would get very excited about it, and kind of be drawn to these areas, and, you know, purchase food from these vendors, and, and then if that were successful, we could move to the next step. We just, you know, we're thinking test run, make sure it is feasible, and that the community does want it, and then take that next step, because if we do open Pandora's Box, as we're talking about, that's a lot more things we need to do, so.
Were, were you thinking that that test period would last throughout the summer or a couple of weeks?
We were hoping we could get, you know, towards the end of the summer, even into the fall. Sometimes I've even seen vendors in November, so, as long as they'd want to operate.
I think you've gathered tonight that there's a certain amount of excitement and urgency about moving through the test period quickly.
Yes.
So, that's another thing, perhaps, that you're gathering from our input, that your EPAC will need to consider, and ultimately the ordinance writing.
Yes.
So, like, you know, maybe August 1st, something like that. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Mr. Nelson has a second comment.
Real quick, if, if you decide to go with this proposal, one of the things is that the way that they've designed the spots for the vehicles can go doesn't work with the way the vehicles are designed, okay? So it has to be totally changed from that standpoint, because the vehicles are all meant to go off to the side, to go off to the side, and you can't have them side by side. So, just a thought.
Okay, any other public input? Yep?
Sorry to bother you guys again with this, but since it's here, just a couple more things. We were talking about baby steps, and like, I like the idea that, is it big enough? I didn't know if that, what you're doing might not be big enough even to get an accurate measurement off of, and we were talking about if we opened it up, people would want more. All the time we get the, the question, "Why can't you sell here? Why can't you sell there?" And I think there'd be tons of those questions coming up, and, which, you know, I guess would further stimulate the council to maybe expand a little bit more. And, you know, you have to change the ordinance to do this, it's kind of, and you go through a lot to change the ordinance. Why would you do all of this to change the ordinance for eight spaces in the city when you can maybe open it up? And I'm not saying open the whole place up, you know, with the parking issues that Mr. Van Gompo brought up and stuff, but maybe some areas or something that you could identify, and who knows, maybe it's four areas more than, than what it is, you know, working with the city and, and vendors and stuff that maybe know the city better. And the other, the other thing that came up, too, is they wanted to make sure that the vendors were following all the rules, and I guess my response to that was, we already have to follow the rules, whether we're on private property or city property, we already follow our health rules, and we are inspected, and we do pay our fees, and the great thing is, once again, we may become brick and mortar and become taxpayers, you know, again for you guys in the city, you know, for several businesses. I know there's a couple in here that are already paying taxes, you know, property taxes to you guys, so, thank you.
And thank you. Councilmember Van Hayden, Mr. Kuim?
Yeah, sorry. Just a quick question.
Sure.
You're talking about kind of this baby steps and opening it up a little bit. Would you be adverse, you know, I don't, you know, the timeline on approving this and setting it up, that if we went a couple more weeks to give time for the vendors to meet with the committee to talk about this, wouldn't it make more, it seemed to me it would make more sense to come up with a stronger proposal than it is to do a piece, a small proposal like this, and then say, "We got to change something."
From my personal standpoint, I think it would. Would I, do I want the, the city to be open tomorrow to sell in?
I understand that.
Sure, sure we would. We do a lot of catering, we found that we ended up doing a lot of catering from our food business, because the people do like us, but it's just, there's certain people that just say, "Okay, you cater, but we got a taste of your food, we want to eat it every day. How can we eat it every day, or once a week, or something like that? Where can we be at?" So, and then, you know, one other question, too, we were talking about competition, too. We've been invited several times to Halle Park while their concession stand is open, and we set up out in the center, and they set up, you know, where they're at, and both concession stands benefit greatly from, you know, we don't sell a $2.00 hot dog, we sell a $7.00, $8.00 sandwich. We don't sell soda when we're there, or if we do, we sell it through them, you know, so the, so it gives it choices, that you go to a ball field, and there's a hot dog and a pretzel and an orange, you know? Every, every concession stand you go to is that way. When you open up somewhere else, you have a choice. We walk up and, if I want pizza, or if I want a hot dog, or if I want a taco, or I want barbecue, you know, you have a choice. I walk up, I'll guarantee you that when I, when I go with my significant other to a food venue, we don't both eat a hamburger, you know, we don't both eat barbecue, we don't both eat, you know, the same meal, so we like that. And that's the cool part about a, like a food truck mall, too. So, same thing in Oakwood Mall, you know, choices, so, yeah. Yes, I think it would benefit to have somebody talk, you know, speak with a vendor, or somebody that's been out there, these, these gentlemen that have been working a lot in Eau Claire. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, that was a very interesting discussion. See no further input, right? Councilmember Klinkamer?
Have I used up my two questions?
You have, but?
Yeah. I have a question for the gentleman right there.
Yes, sir.
I apologize for not making note of your name.
Miles Casey?
Miles Casey.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Casey?
Yes, sir.
You were one that specifically identified service to manufacturing plants and businesses that are remote from restaurants.
Yes, sir.
Are there more than half a dozen of those sites in the community that you could see as being potentially profitable for? as being potentially profitable for a food truck?
I would say there's a minimum of half a dozen. I mean, there are some, there are some pockets that are strictly industrial or manufacturing, whatever you want to call it. And there's, you know, there's nothing there right now for them to run to lunch for. They're warming up a sandwich in the microwave. So to walk out to the street and grab a hot sandwich and a couple of nice warm sides or something, I think it's, I think, yes, I think there is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
And another question for Ms. Coghlan.
Okay, Ms. Coghlan.
Inasmuch as these sites are not in conflict with existing brick and mortar restaurants, they're not in downtown, they're not in areas where parking would, at least in my mind, be an issue for parking. It would seem to me that if there were a half a dozen of these sites located next to manufacturing plants or businesses that didn't have close access to restaurants, that we could include those in this trial period and see how that goes.
Sure.
And then expand it to other public streets if it seemed to work.
And I'm not positive, but I believe mobile food trucks can operate in industrial zoned areas. Maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Nick.
What was your question? Yeah? The on-street is a separate issue. There's ordinances that deal both with sale of goods in parks. That's more flexible because you can grant an exception, council can grant an exception. So frankly, I think the way to deal with it is use your existing ordinance. If you're interested in trying this policy, you know, adopt a resolution to give it a trial period and grant the use exception. Don't change your ordinance on a trial period. You have a separate ordinance that prohibits sales on your streets. So unless it's closed for a special event, can't sell on streets. You also have potential zoning issues. The way to handle it, which I understand might have been commented on while I had to step out, but any of the vendors can ask for permission to sell from any of those properties, obtain their own insurance. And of course, if there's liability issues, it'd be the same sort of issues that we as a city would experience. So they can work those out with those major employers. One last comment, if you haven't watched it already, watch the movie Chef. It's a nice movie about food truck vendors.
I knew that. I'm sorry, in my enthusiasm for this issue, I spaced on that. My apology.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Coghlan.
Thank you.
For all your work and to EPAC. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to the people who spoke this evening, we're much appreciative. And with that, the chair will close. Item number two, and bring our attention to our next item tonight, is a status report on the process of updating the city's comprehensive plan. Mr. Tufti. That always happens to us, so it's okay. Mr. Tufti.
In your packet is the introduction and summary to the Eau Claire comprehensive plan. And it's a nice document in terms of stating what's new in this document in comparison to our 2005 comprehensive plan. For those who'd like to read the entire document, it is now on the city website. And if you print it, it looks about like that and it takes a little bit longer to get through it. Last spring, we came to the city council with the work program for the update of our comprehensive plan and council approved that work program. And we've been spending the last 12 to 14 months working on it. Our Plan Commission appointed a Citizens Advisory Committee of 40 members. They began their work last September. Their last meeting was in June. They had 10 meetings in which they reviewed all sorts of background information in our existing plans. Also last spring, you may remember, we conducted interviews with over 50 people within the community, included all the city council and Plan Commission members, and talked about what issues we should be discussing as we update the comprehensive plan. And we also had two open houses. The second one was on June 30th. We had over 70 people in attendance and our consultant gave a 30-minute presentation. And it was interesting, we didn't have a lot of comments, so we're getting to where we think we're pretty close in terms of what the update should say. And we're here tonight to give you a status report as to where we're at. When we talk about prior plans, here's a list of some of those documents that were reviewed by the Citizens Advisory Committee. And I would remind council, planning is a process. That's why the word planning ends in ing. It's not a document. It should always be reviewed, updated, and changed over time. When we do our planning processes, we base it on a issues-based planning. We actually identified over 70 issues that we attempted to address in the update of the comprehensive plan. These are some of the major issues. Those first three are actually listed in the introduction and summary. They're in that document called, number one, household income or employment. What should the city do about jobs, helping to raise average incomes, reducing our rate of poverty, unemployment, and underemployment within the community? The chapters that address that not only include our economic development chapter, there's also policy statements within our housing, neighborhood, transportation, and land use chapters. And we're actually even adding some new information within the demographics section pertaining to existing programs that are funded with our community development block grant. Neighborhood improvement became another major issue that we talked about within the planning document. What can we do to help improve our older neighborhoods? And we actually created a whole new chapter within the comprehensive plan to address that. Downtown improvements or redevelopment then is a third major issue. What are the next steps in the redevelopment of North Barstow and South Barstow District? And that issue is addressed within the downtown chapter of the comprehensive plan. And I won't go into other issues, but that's basically how the planning process works when we go through it. Bill Weber, our planning consultant, loves to give a synopsis. If you're asked in an elevator, what's the comprehensive plan all about? There it is, as short as he could write it. The major themes being be an attractive city where people want to live and work, be the regional center that we are in terms of good jobs, education, healthcare, and shopping, continue to encourage compact growth with the agreements we have struck with our surrounding towns, and work to improve our older neighborhoods. If anybody asks you, there it is. He actually gave quizzes to our citizen advisory committee. We draft our comprehensive plan in chapters. These are the chapters that are proposed in the comprehensive plan. Nine of them are required by state law. Others exist from past plans. And again, we added the neighborhood chapter this time. Again, a complete narrative of all those chapters is now on the city website. And tonight, I'm going to go through each of those chapters, but instead of summarizing them like Bill Weber did and take 30 minutes, I'm going to just give you an example of what's in each of the chapters so I won't be up here so long. The first chapter, and it's really then the heart of a comprehensive plan, is the land use chapter. The chapter particularly encourages us to follow the agreements we made with the towns in terms of encouraging that compact urban growth. We also did subarea plans with the surrounding towns that we folded into this comprehensive plan process. And the best way to illustrate the difference in the 2005 comprehensive plan map and the proposed is to put them side by side. Again, 2005 and the proposed. And if you look at the two maps, you'll note in particular, the perimeter of the city has changed substantially. And the reason is, we worked in advance of updating the comprehensive plan with the five surrounding towns and developed with the Plan Commission, subarea plans. And those subarea plans are literally folded into this new comprehensive plan, and that's why this periphery of our city looks much different than our 2005 comprehensive plan. A simple example of other changes, note the airport in our 2005 is a blue, public use. And in the update, it's a green airport. That's because our update of our comprehensive plan says we should develop separate zoning regulations for the airport in conjunction with the Airport Commission, Eau Claire County, and the Federal Aviation Administration, since right now, we all have different standards. And it would seem logical that we all get on the same page and have the same set of standards. So we set that up with the drafting of this comprehensive plan. Our transportation chapter. Eau Claire's a nice community to live in and that we have few transportation problems. You'll find our transportation plan has a greater emphasis on bicycle and walking. And a simple example of a transportation improvement proposed in this comprehensive plan is the Galloway Street improvement. The comprehensive plan dating back to 1992 proposed what's called a crosstown arterial, which is a new interchange at Cameron in I-94 with Cameron, Madison, Tremania, Birch, and River Prairie Drive being the crosstown arterial to the interchange at 53. This plan proposes looking at Galloway Street as an alternative connection to the downtown, simply it's because it's a more direct link to the downtown and also because it takes traffic off of Birch Street, which really is a residential street in terms of its location. We have a utilities chapter, which talks about our sewage collection system. In the updates, we are underway or almost completed with at our sewage treatment plant. It talks about our water systems plan and the plan that we just updated in 2014, which was presented to council, I believe, earlier this year. And it has a greater emphasis on surface water management using more natural approaches in terms of swales and grass and running filtration with water instead of just piping it directly out to our rivers. We have a parks, Greenway, and Trails chapter within the comprehensive plan. It identifies not six future park sites, two new parks with our schools, and various riverfront improvements. A simple example of one of these new parks is the playground proposed at Roosevelt Elementary School. Try to zoom in on that and see what happens. Actually, it's pretty good. That's Roosevelt Elementary School. And right across Folsom Street, there's a vacant parcel of land, which if you head to the east, we have a trail plan that connects over to the High Bridge, which just opened last week. And we also own the property then heading south down to Half Moon Lake as another trail connection. And this park says we should look at that property for a future neighborhood park. Our natural resource chapter talks about protecting our water resources within our communities, our floodplains, our shoreline, wetland areas, our steep slopes. A nice example of what's new in this plan is we should look at our street tree plans and policies. Something changed about 10 years in that policy and we're not getting the street trees in we used to say 10 years ago. Council should evaluate that program, see if we can't do a better job in terms of planting street trees within the community. This is the new chapter we added to our comprehensive plan called our neighborhood plan. This map illustrates the older neighborhoods around the downtown, the North Riverfronts, North Side Hill, East Side Hill, Third Ward, Historic Randall Park, and the West Riverside. All of those neighborhoods have adopted neighborhood plans. An example of what the neighborhood chapter proposes is to convene a task force of leaders within the community to come up with some new major efforts to help our older neighborhoods, to consider a nonprofit development corporation as part of that that would help in terms of the revitalization, rehabbing of our older homes, and to look at our code compliance provisions within our city code in terms of how can they be strengthened to help these Our economic development chapter talks about increasing our tax base, creating new jobs within our community. It has now a greater emphasis on our central locations and redevelopment than our past plans have. An example of a new idea within the economic development chapter is there's a need for more space for small businesses, support businesses, contractors. Our Chippewa Valley Industrial Park up by the airport is almost full, and that's where they've been building for many years. And we need to start thinking about an alternative space for those folks. Our downtown plan has a map showing South Barstow, North Barstow, West Madison, and the Courthouse District as the greater downtown, not the traditional downtown we were talking about the other day in terms of the downtown of North and South Barstow. An example of new policy within the downtown plan is, here's the next step in terms of North Barstow. Start master planning for the area shown in yellow, east and north of our successful North Barstow redevelopment area. We have an urban design chapter. This is a chapter not required by state law, but it has been in our comprehensive plan since 1992. It talks about the appearance of our community. An example of something new in this chapter talks about preparing commercial site design guidelines. Right now, we do have multifamily housing design guidelines, and the plan suggests we should look at the same for downtown commercial sites or new commercial sites on the periphery of the community. Our housing chapter summarizes the various assistant programs that Eau Claire Housing Authority puts on, talks about affordable housing that is provided by the private sector within our community. An example of a new policy within this chapter is to look more closely at the role of our not-for-profit organizations within the community and how can they assist in affordable housing. Our historic and cultural resource chapter summarizes all the various programs that benefit historical sites within the community and the cultural work is also done within our community. An example of the policy statement is, again, proposes that we phase in properties that opted out of the 19, in 1992, of our historic districts in our older neighborhoods. And those are highlighted here is the Randall Park Historic District and the Third Ward Our community facilities chapter talks about the various public facilities within our community. A simple example noted in this chapter is, what do we do about reusing retired churches? And we are now, we have four of them within the community. Two recently announced merger publicly, although they haven't decided which church they're going to use. So they're out there and usually they get reused as a daycare or another church, but sometimes they have a problem. And they're a building sitting in the middle of a residential neighborhood that needs to have some type of a logical reuse. Intergovernmental Cooperation Chapter states a lot of language about land use agreements that we have now put in place with the surrounding towns. An example of a new statement in there has to do with, you should be talking with the city of Altoona in terms of long-term annexation west of Otter Creek along Prill Road. Don't let that become another hodgepodge boundary. Strike a deal that makes sense to both communities in terms of the service deliveries the communities have to make and make that the logical annexation boundary through a boundary agreement. We also, as part of the update of the comprehensive plan, reviewed our 2009 sustainability chapter. We asked the Advisory Commission on Sustainability to do that work. They provided comments and recommendations to the Plan Commission. And there will be an amendment to that chapter in the comprehensive plan brought forward to council as part of this comprehensive plan. this comprehensive plan update. We also reviewed the more recently 2013 health chapter of the comprehensive plan. We asked the Eau Claire Healthy Community Council to review that document, and they did have comments. Plan Commission reviewed the comments. It was felt because of the newness of the plan, there was not need to make any amendments to that document at this time. And then the final slide is there is a plan implementation chapter within the document. It talks about review the document every year, update it on a regular basis. And if you want to find another great summary in terms of what's in the comprehensive plan, go to the plan implementation chapter, and it'll list all the key actions recommended by each of the chapters in a summary document, and that's where the council can really see in about 10 pages what the comprehensive plan is all about. I would also note that your public hearings have been scheduled. The Plan Commission public hearing will be on September 14th, and the City Council public hearing will be on September 21st, the week following. And Plan Commission will continue to make changes to the comprehensive plan right up to their public hearing, and those are always then updated on the website as we go through the process. And with that, I'd answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Tufti. Questions? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Tufti, for your leadership and your work on this. It's a lot of meetings, meeting with the ING. I know that one of the issues that was brought up by the citizens, kind of a major issue, was the issue of poverty. And the comprehensive plan does address it explicitly in one section, and then kind of implicitly throughout the plan. I'm wondering if you can talk about any, I guess, ability or agency that the city is able to perhaps tease some more of those nuanced items out that address poverty, maybe in a one cheater type of document to say, here's some more ways that we are looking at this versus, I think, the one explicit reference I saw was a key action from the economic chapter under a certain item. So just wondering if there's any current plans to do that?
We are adding at this time, it was sent to our consultant as a four-page document. I believe he's got it down to a two-page document. They'll put it to the demographic section that talks about the various programs funded through cities' community development block grant, which address housing homelessness and other poverty issues within the community.
Thank you. I heard you mention something along those lines. So will that be then the kind of additional response that is currently under works to add to the comprehensive plan versus something that doesn't necessarily have to do just with demographics as kind of?
This really doesn't just deal with demographics, but we couldn't figure out where else to place it other than in the demographics chapter. It has to do with how we're using our federal block grant monies. And it's important information that probably should be documented within the plan. So that's why we went to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission said, yeah, put it into the document. It makes sense. So that's the one step that we could think of after the open house where we had the discussion on poverty.
I might have another question after council's gone through.
Could you talk a little bit about what that nonprofit development corporation might look like that you had in your neighborhoods section?
I can tell you, the idea would be to go out to other communities and find out what they're doing, because some of the bigger cities in particular have these types of nonprofits up and operating. Many of them deal particularly with just housing issues. Others, they'll go beyond that and get into many other issues as it pertains to older neighborhoods. The plan does not have any specifics in terms of what should be done, other than we should go out and look at it and talk about it and see if that's something that would work in this community.
Thank you. Councilmember Clay Cameron? Thank you. Well, I know that in September, when this is, the final rendition is offered and will be accepted, that you and your department will be praised greatly. But I want to thank you. There are some really innovative things in here, and a lot of thought went into it, and a lot of hard work by a lot of people, especially you. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one small thing on the neighborhood one again, talked about code compliance on there. Is that talking about code enforcement or new codes? What was the thought on that?
It's talking about both, enhancing our present code enforcement and looking at other new codes that may help our older neighborhoods. The one example that we saw in the press recently is a rental registration with a more regular inspection. And again, the plan suggested something that we should look at and consider. Doesn't spell out the specifics of the programs. There are other communities in the state that do a more vigorous rental registration inspection program. We already have parts of that going on at this time with the Health Department licensing of our rooming houses and annual inspections that go on there. And that's something that, if the plan's adopted, that we'll bring forward in the future and have those types of discussions.
Okay. Did you have another question?
Thank you. I think I'm just going to try to clarify this for myself, and if I can't, then I know how to find you on the phone. So as I understand, the suggestion that was discussed from the Plan Commission was to take the block grant information that's important, and a good home is to put it in the demographic chapter, even though they're not necessarily tied together. It's a good home. I agree with that. What about, I guess what I'm looking at is putting a flashlight on the other items that are in the comp plan as proposed, such as transportation, other housing initiatives, not just the higher income jobs in the economic development chapter. What about teasing some of those items out and putting it together as a one pager or something like that to say, these are additional items that we see help to alleviate, help to lift people up out of poverty, et cetera, that might not have to do with the block grant and might not have to do with demographics?
I do know that in the summary, and I'm not sure which draft got into your packet, the initial draft basically just listed, refer to economic development chapter, and the updated summary document now says refer to, I think, five or six different chapters, because all of them do have direct or indirect language as it may pertain to poverty. I know that was done. But I don't know of any other issue where we specifically take out and say, here's all the language in a planning document as it may pertain to poverty. I know in the past, we did separate planning projects as it pertained to sustainability or as it pertained to health as a way of just looking at planning from a different approach. And I don't know if that would be something that would be beneficial to the city or not to just simply look at poverty as a different approach in planning. When we do a comprehensive plan, a lot of the things we talk about in a comprehensive plan help poverty, but it's not talking, it's not written as it pertains directly to poverty. It's just written as we have transit systems that helps poverty. We deal with low-income housing that helps poverty. It's just written differently. So that's the best, I guess, I can say as it pertains to what we're discussing.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your input. I'll just ask if there are people in the audience who came to comment on the plan. See, we got an update on the process of updating. Anyone here to comment on that? No. Okay. And seeing no further questions, we will close that item. It'll be back before us as Mr. Tufti outlined. Our last item tonight is a presentation from the Council Ad-Hoc Committee on Resolution Development, and Councilmember Lewis has agreed to present this to council. Councilmember Lewis.
Do you want me to just sit here and do that? Ms. Merle, do we have a copy of the flowchart?
Thank you. Our committee took on the issue of getting a resolution ordinance on the agenda, and we did take a look at this only from a council member's viewpoint, not from how staff gets things on or how committees might get things on. One of the things we really wanted to talk about and let you know, we did not take anything away or change the ordinance that we currently have. There is an ordinance out there that says with a second, you can get it to the city manager, and it goes on the agenda. We did not remove that. We didn't change anything with how most of us operate today, which is just send an email to the city manager or the city council president and ask for your item to be put on. And as most of us will see, have experienced, we're going down that left side of the flowchart. The city manager supports that, assigns a staff member to work with you, and it gets put onto the agenda. Where we looked at this further was to try and develop something that would help you get a more complex issue that might need more input, that maybe staff is saying, this is going to take a lot of time that we don't have, and the city manager might be saying, we're not ready to go down this path yet. And so you might go in and sit down with the city manager, and he's not really supporting getting this item on the agenda yet. And part of his suggestion might be his or her, we're going to just, it's Russ here, but he might just say, we need some more research. I need to know, has anybody else done this? I need to know, were you really going to go with this? Or can you change it? I do not want to paint all the fire trucks green and gold, but maybe we consider blue and yellow, something like that, you know, would you change? And then you go back and you consider this, and you bring it back to him, and maybe you've made those changes, and he's like, okay, fine, I will now give you a staff member. Let's get this written, let's get it on the agenda. However, he might not want to paint any of the fire engines at all. And he said, no way. This is just not going to happen. And this is where our new process kind of comes in here, is that it used to be if you really felt strong on it, your only option was go get a second, and what I kind of called it, it was the ramming it through, you know, hitting hardball and never having that chance to have the public discussion. What we have now is that after your second discussion with the city manager, you have the option that you can ask for a pre-legislative item on the agenda, which tells you're not going to have the resolution presented, it's not going to be voted up or down. What it's going to be is you'll present your resolution, staff will present your resolution, they'll talk about what's the pros and cons, you'll talk about what you like it, and as a group, as this council, we can talk openly about this project. I think we talked about it could be a committee of the whole, it could be something like a study topic, where we get to talk. And maybe that's where we learn what some of the objections of the council members might have. We hear why staff says this is going to take too much time, can we narrow this down? And the only decision that comes out of it that night is not an up or down on your resolution or your ordinance, it is just a, should we continue to pursue this? Is it the right thing to do now? And that's a little change from the way we've done things before. But it does allow, I think, where I looked at an example of this was last week with the state budget hearings, and a lot of people were talking about the stuff that happens behind the scenes that all of a sudden comes out, and where was the discussion, when did this happen? And I was thinking about what we're talking about here. A lot of times by a resolution, if a resolution makes it here, all the decision-making, a lot of it's been done behind the scenes, the writing's been done, the words are all there, and we know they're legal and they're right. And trying to wordsmith here on the floor and have a debate can be kind of tough, that this will allow that moment of discussion that we maybe haven't had before, and hear both sides, hear what people are thinking, before it comes back to us as a resolution. And I think it'll allow all of us a little bit more cooperative input, the public that chance to hear our open discussions. So in a nutshell, as opposed to that four-inch binder, our thing could be printed on both sides, one page. It would go into tab four of our council member handbook. And I think that what we looked at here was not taking any of the powers away that we currently have, but just a way to define what could happen and how we work with the city manager and even how he can work with us. I think sometimes it could become adversarial, as they didn't want it, but we did, and you're kind of fighting, and why can't I get staff, and why can't I get this? And I think now we've got that process that says, here's a way to work this through. So I don't know if you want me to go through each one of these bullets as to what they mean. I'm going to trust that all of you read this and know all of these things, but I believe any of us on the committee would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you. You'll see there's no action on our legislative agenda. This would just become a policy in our council handbook. For old people, the council handbook looks like this. For more modern people, it's on the website under the government tab, City Council Handbook, the most recent version. So it would become a policy of the council. And so we do need, we do need some input from the rest of you. Maybe we need to talk about this again, maybe this isn't the only night, but we do need some input. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for this work. I know you all have been working on this for quite some time, and it's appreciated. I think the reason why most people run to be elected is to try to make a difference, and we do that through public policy. And ways that we can stream like that and make it more effective for all of us and our constituents that we represent is of a high value. I had some questions, and I think Councilmember Lewis, you've answered probably, I've got three questions, and you've answered the big one, which is if it's not, if people don't think it's viable, can't two councilmembers still bring it forward? The answer is yes. So you've answered that. So now I'll just ask my two questions. So I have here, for the rare scenario, what happens if the item is time-sensitive and the city, maybe our city manager or city staff doesn't agree with the item, and there isn't time to discuss the viability of an item? I'll give an example. Maybe there's a decision that happens at the state level, the council, or one councilmember wants to make, have the council take a vote on something, there's not agreement of, well, that's not proper for the council to talk about, or one person, you know, the whole thing. So what happens if it's just time-sensitive and we can't vet it through? Then we should be encouraged to just go with the regular route of just getting a mover and a seconder, and that's that?
We had actually an example of this that our council president Kincaid used at our last meeting with, was it yours and Act 10? We talk about time-sensitive in here, and we understand that, and we don't want this to have to take the place of that. This is more if you're taking a look at a very large ordinance change, you know, do something like landlord licensing, which could have so much input and so many different ways to come, that why would you want to write the resolution right away? That we could go to something that allowed us more work time. That kind of an issue does not require a lot of staff time. That was one of the things we did. Your resolution would be fairly well-written before it came. There isn't a lot of time to go in it, and we're not trying to take that away. So you would have the same options you've always had. Is, Andrew, did I get that right?
May I ask my second question? Okay. What if an item is then brought to the floor, and most people on council don't think it's viable? And then the city manager's office could say, well, council doesn't think it's viable. Does that mean that assistance from staff to research or to look into an issue, or if in the event that people change their minds and then it became viable, if people had an opportunity to vote on it, does this preclude a councilmember from seeking assistance to try to make whatever it is administratively feasible or make it work if it were to pass?
I'm going to answer from my own viewpoint, and maybe some of the other committee members will have something to add to that. The way I look at whether it's viable is it came down to a couple of things, and the way I read this whole thing was more was should staff be assigned the time? That if we came in here and I had something that was going to take a lot of staff time, and our city manager said, I don't know where I'll find the time to get this done, but I bring it to a pre-legislative meeting, and I've got several others that say, we really want the staff time. This group would have to kind of say to the city manager, maybe pull somebody off. pull somebody off, or maybe we have to hire a consultant and we'll come up with the money for that, that you have to find a viable thing. It's not whether you think, we think you have the votes to pass it or not. For me, it was whether or not the city manager would find you the help to work your resolution through. That's the way that I would interpret this, and I'm open to how any, anybody else would want to explain that.
I think the overarching ethos of our work is collegiality and figuring out a way to discuss with city staff the executive and legislative function of running the city. And to the extent that legislators want to bring in issue but need help with details, how could we create a relationship of collegiality? So if you look at your flowchart, we hope that it flows, if there's a problem with the way you've worded your idea or the scope of it, the interests of it, that we would loop, make this loop several times before we even hit a pre-legislative discussion item. That there would be some work between the mover, the interested party, and the executive to narrow or change the focus. So we're hoping we would use this loop quite a bit in, in a more discussion format. So that your scenario wouldn't play out very often. That's our intent. That's why we left the ordinance unchanged, though. The power of two people to bring an item to the agenda remains intact. Neither the city manager nor the council president can prevent any item from appearing on the agenda that is moved and seconded by any of you. We don't have that power, and that remains intact. One maybe very difficult example for us to consider would be, let's say, our city or someone on this council was interested in legalizing marijuana. A very big contentious issue, multi-pronged, health implications, emotional implications, how would you even chew on that? How would you, how would you chew on that? We figured that this process would even help us with such a large and contentious issue should something like that arise. And we just keep working on it together and perhaps changing the language, perhaps changing the scope, perhaps, perhaps even landing at a pre-legislative discussion item and saying, wow, the council who came to that legislative meeting with our constituents behind us is not going to lend its support to this idea. And I can see that now. So it would, would function to help us test perhaps controversial and large issues. That's our vision. Councilmember Worthman.
Just to add to that a little bit, two things. One, in response to councilmember Emanuel's question is this idea that, you know, again, that we felt, even though you might come to a pre-legislative session and there doesn't seem to be the will of the council, I think most of us felt that it was important still to preserve the ordinance as it is for a councilmember and for, rather, a councilmember and a secondor, two councilmembers to bring an issue to the floor, even if it's not a popular idea. Because sometimes those are conversations that are helpful to have in public, just for the fact of the public being aware of, here's how people stand on an issue. Even if the end vote is nine to two, sorry, two to nine, we felt that that was an important thing to preserve. So I'll make that note. I think another positive, very positive thing, and I want to draw attention to it, is in the biggest box that you see, the square box there, it talks about sort of the remedies if, if you don't feel, or if there isn't support from the city manager's office, or rather if, if the city manager says, we would like you to do a little more homework on your idea and potentially get more support. One of the things in there talks about other councilmembers also weighing in. And this is qualified by highlighting the fact that that has to be done in a, in a way that's, that is in keeping with our open meetings law. And so, you know, this is something that I just want to draw attention to, is I think a really positive idea, because oftentimes it might be helpful for the city manager to hear, you know, four, five, or six councilmembers that all are sort of, say, for example, this food truck issue. I would say, just looking around the room here, we might have four or five people who all kind of are feeling a certain way about the issue. Well, if that's communicated just on a one-way street to the city manager, I think there's a feeling then about what the support could look like on city council. So I wanted to draw attention to that piece, because I think that's kind of an exciting development. Obviously, it has to be done in a way, though, that is in keeping with our open meetings law, because the public needs to have confidence that there are conversations going around where we're trying to, you know, whip votes and make sure that, make sure that the item is already passed before we even get to the council. So that's something that we discuss quite a bit, and I want to kind of draw your attention to it.
Councilmember Larson.
Thank you. I just have a question about the term, pre-legislative discussion. It says it's similar to a study issue or a work session, but does, but then it sounds like it occurs at a council meeting. Would that be a Monday night meeting or a Tuesday night meeting? And what rules apply to that? I mean, can you just expound on what a pre-legislative discussion is and how it happens?
Call on our city attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Nick?
I don't have a movie reference on this one. You know, I think the study issue or work session are examples of how we've tried to build this in in the past, where there's some desire to discuss it. I think councilmember Worthman really did a very nice job of, you know, covering the issue along with the very legitimate concern about the open meeting law, that, you know, it's just natural that you want to have that sort of discussion, but we'd rather have it, you know, in the open and oftentimes we're required to, even though you certainly can have one-on-one discussions with members, you have that, that sort of chaining issue that can become problematic. So as opposed to trying to sort some of that out outside of an open meeting, you know, what at least our city is, has come up with in the past is, well, let's, let's sort this issue out a bit in a study issue. Instead of having to fully draft some sort of complex ordinance, say, a new entire licensing scheme for food trucks hypothetically that would take, you know, extensive time even beyond what's already been invested, you know, how about we put it on for some type of a, you know, a public presentation or a study issue or a work session? To, again, to gauge that interest, to hear collectively what your thoughts might be. And again, that can inform staff. I mean, ultimately, certainly this would be an issue for, for us or the city manager to, to determine, but, I mean, it does help us on the staff side, one, hear what your various issues are to better draft something for you, but also to gauge how much, how we prioritize our various issues and when to work on it for you. And then, I forget who had mentioned it, it might have been councilmember Lewis, I think it was, but also deal with the very legitimate issue of how you're going to, how you're going to pay for it. So that's great. You know, one of the issues in that study issue, you know, pre-legislative or study issue might be, well, it's great, you want to do this brand-new big thing, but it's not queued up, it's not in our comp plan, it's not something we've anticipated working on, but we hear you want to work on it. You might need a consultant. You know, we might need to hire outside resources, and now council, you're going to have to make the fiscal decision of where to come up with funds to make that legislative policy a reality. And I think a lot of those things you can try to sort out through, you know, again, those are the terms we've given to them in the past, work sessions or study issues. And so that's why we toss those out as examples here.
Can I, maybe more directly to your question about would they be on Monday or Tuesday night? One of the things we talked about was as the councilmember requesting a pre-legislative meeting, you could actually say, do you want it on Monday or on Tuesday? Because it's on Monday does not mean the next day would be your legislative day. So I think we might see that there are issues that you would want more on a Monday and maybe have the public hear if you felt you wanted some more weight on that or something like that. But we left that, we purposefully left that open, that we would not say which day it was, but you would. And I'm not sure, you mentioned something about the rules of whether the public could actually speak on it if it was just a study session or not.
[inaudible]
Yeah, and that's it. We've got to test some and see where it goes.
We tested it personally.
With a food truck.
Councilmember Strubel.
Yeah, I just, I had a question. We talked about putting this in the city council handbook. How does something get in a city council handbook if, if we're not going to vote on it or something? How, how do we place something in a city council handbook? So tell me how that process works.
It's adopted by consensus as a policy that, that steers our behavior. And Mr. Nick will weigh in also.
Certainly defer to the manager if you'd like to weigh in on it. But typically, it's, it's put together by the manager's office with input from, from my office. It's presented in discussion at organizational meetings. You know, if there's, there's feedback, and there has been over the years, to revise it, you know, that's, that's been done. But it, it's, it's largely something that's, that's put together by staff to try to assist you as, as guidance. I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, because you've, you know, you've used it, I'm sure, over the years. But, you know, we put things in there about the open meetings law, public record law, ethics, they're suggestions. And so something like this, I think, is, I mean, it's, it's a suggestion, as again, councilmember Lewis presented. It doesn't have an ordinance change. The ordinance will work exactly the same way. It's simply a guide to council, and here's a suggestion of how to work with your city manager in particular, and staff in general, and also how to work amongst yourself to move something from an idea forward to a piece of legislation that your fellow councilmembers can vote on. And there's a whole number of things like that in your handbook, and none of them were ever voted on by council. It's just simply a guidance document for you to consider.
Mr. Van Buren.
Just a couple additional comments. I think, you know, this, this council went through a process last year where we talked about some of those guiding principles and how we'd work well together as a team between the legislative and the operational side of things. And we had provided some additional suggestions and, and actually identified some of those roles and responsibilities a little bit more definitively in the handbook last year during the organizational meeting. And I would envision that while we can roll this out right away, you know, it'll be, you'll see that incorporated in the handbook along with the other things that the attorney has mentioned.
Just want, just want to add a couple extra things for, for folks to think about is, I think that, that if you look five or six years ago, and when I first got on council, I think there was, it was a little bit fuzzy about how this process exactly goes. And one of the issues that came up and that I always struggled with is when you approach to get help with crafting an idea or bringing something to the floor, is how, what is the, what is the timing on that? Because I remember at the time, under a different city manager, if something maybe didn't have the priority, it might take six months. And I think now, knowing what we know now, is oftentimes city staff is wrestling with so many different issues and trying to figure out what is the priority here and how fast should we bring this forward is part of the impetus about why this, this came to be. It's trying to help the city manager's office and the folks who will help bring this to the floor, figure out what is the council's priority on this item. That's, so I just want to throw that out there as kind of why, why this has shown up in front of us. Another thing is that we kind of identified too in our meetings, that in our committees, commissions, and boards, that there needs to be a little clarification on that side of things as well, in terms of how do items become, you know, get on the agenda and what are, what are the priorities there? And we sort of figured that there's actually been some things, for example, the B ordinance, where that wouldn't have been the same, it wouldn't have gone through the same channels as it had originally if we had had this in place. So there's, there's another, that's another piece of it that might be coming at some point.
Councilmember T.
Thank you, council president Kinkade. I think this is just some really nice work. In my vocation, I get to spend a lot of time in committees and work with other groups, and really the compliment to acknowledge the amount of work the city staff is doing. We're not always aware of that. And also, we may get polarized because we bring up an idea that has a genesis of something good, but not realize it's trying to change the constitution to, to make that happen, to use another large example. So I just think this will help us work together well.
Councilmember Kinkade.
Let's hope so. Having sat on the, having sat on the committee, it, what's, the, what starts out as a pretty simple concept, you get a councilmember and a secondor and you bring it forward. Well, it doesn't really always work that smoothly. And as we worked on this and it evolved and changed, and there are a lot of subtleties to it, as councilmember Worthman just mentioned, ideas that come through commissions or committees where our work isn't done yet. And this, this flowchart and the narrative that goes with it, hopefully, will make it more easily understood and bring the possibility of our legislative ideas to come forward in a, as councilmember president, in a more collegial manner. Because I think staff and our city manager and each of us, and all of us as a group, are committed to our community and to our city. And we, given the right environment, we work better together than we do in opposition. And hopefully, this enables that.
Councilmember Larson.
Thanks. I just briefly want to echo my agreement with both of the previous speakers. But what comes to mind for me is shortly after coming on council, I made a proposal to make some changes to FISPAC. And had this been in place then, I probably would have handled it differently than I did. And it worked out fine, but it was kind of clumsy going through that process, so, so I think this will help a lot.
Okay. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say thank you, everybody, again, for your work on this and to help us be less clumsy is going to be good. I promise I will be very clumsy still, but maybe in other ways. So the two pieces of feedback I would give to the committee if you chose to meet again would be these two items. Maybe adding some type of line or a note somehow that just reiterates that if councilmembers still may use the, I guess, original pathway to place an item onto an agenda. And I didn't see that on there, and I felt kind of bad. I felt like my questions that I had tonight were kind of deficit-focused, and I don't like to ask questions like that. So I think it's because I didn't see, I read this as every possible pathway, it's somewhere along the lines, there's agreement or buy-in, and then it gets on the agenda. So I guess showing what happens, maybe it's very simple if there's not agreement or buy-in, and what is still a legitimate way to put it onto the agenda. And then the second is perhaps adding a sentence towards the top or maybe in that top box, highlighting that word collegiality. I think that's the best word in this whole conversation. I think that really reflects- I think that really reflects, as you said, Council President Kincaid, the ethos of the document and the work. And if I were reading this for the first time, or if I was reading it for the 20th time banging my head against a wall, I think I would want to bang my head on that word to remind me, this is what I should be doing. This is how I should be conducting myself, is to be collegial with one another to the best of my ability.
We talked about an asterisk of, you know, referencing the existing ordinance. We just didn't know what to do with that, you know? So, right? We didn't know what to do with that.
We did talk about it, but it'd be down in the bottom.
Yeah, some kind of asterisk or something, right?
I think we even discussed the possibility of having a narrative lead-in to this chart, which would reference the ordinance. Didn't we discuss that?
A pre-paragraph.
I'll have to have a pre-dinner drink before I draft my pre-ordinance. We did have it in there. Earlier version of the memo, I had cited the code, and then I think the committee and of course its ultimate wisdom decided to take that code reference out because we did want to emphasize the policy preference of, you know, working through the flow chart. So I could try an introductory statement, you know, run that by the committee, I think we were going to meet again anyway, on the notion of how to handle committees and commissions and things like that. And I wrote the note down on the term collegiality, as I'm sure the other members did as well. I don't think there's any specific timeframe on it, other than obviously we'd want to update the handbook before the next organizational meeting. I mean, it's not going to take that kind of time, but I've got both those notes down. Thank you.
We thought of meeting again the end of August, perhaps, or early September to address that second related issue. So that's kind of our timeframe. And then with your permission, then it would go into our handbook under tab four.
The start date of this? We didn't really discuss that, but I mean, I'm assuming moving forward, this is kind of the way that things would be done, starting tonight?
Starting tonight. I don't know. Councilmember Von Haden.
Well, you talk about start date, I, really, what we've done here is define a process and a procedure. And what we're really trying to get to is a logical way of bringing something forward. And as long as we're in agreement about the concept, whether it's written down here in these steps or not, this is what the concept is to get there. We know the rule. We know that any two council members can bring something forward. But this is a way of getting into a more complex issue where there's, we need more study and time and where we may have, and I'll use the word pushback from the city staff for the time they have available. And so I think whether you say it starts tonight, tomorrow, it's a procedure. So it's a concept of how to do it, and I think it just makes sense because the only way we get good legislative decisions is for us all to work together. And once we work together on it, we come up with the best decisions. Because if we do it piecemeal, one each other, we find, just like tonight, when the public came in and talked about the food vendors, the different things that we had, we may have talked about in the process but weren't considered in the ordinance, that's what it's all about, is to give everybody the opportunity to discuss it. And once we discuss it, we can get the best solution.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yeah, I kind of look at it as the city manager starts actually using this process as we, whoever brings him stuff every day, that now he kind of understands what to, how he can get back to us and what kind of feedback he should be giving us. And maybe that hasn't even been clear. I haven't asked for a lot of resolutions. I learned a lot now about how much staff time you have to have, and going through this whole process was extremely informational. But I think that this has got to be just helpful for both sides, that you don't just have to say, yeah, sure, I'll work on it. You actually can respond back to us with something that says, you better do some more work here, or I'm not really looking at this right now, but see if you can get somebody to go to a prelegislative. So I think we have to react to him more than we follow a process. We know what it is, and if you do the same process back with us, we can all work together.
Mr. Van Gumpel.
Just one last comment. I think in the last three years, the majority of the times, things have fallen down the left path anyways. I think it's been fairly few and far between where, you know, the response has been, get a second and we'll just put it on the agenda. But I like the idea of how do we work together to serve the community? And I think most of that is just understanding the request, understanding the process, just looking at some of the strategic issues and plans that councils really adopted and put into place, either from the last three-year plan to this three-year plan to, you know, providing some of those key action items and how does that, all that fit in. But understanding that there's still those unique circumstances that come forward, so.
So we'll, it's there. Now it's there. It's, it'll have a little word tweaking before we place it on the, in the online version, but there it is. And we'll see how it evolves, okay? All right. That was a very good discussion. And is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this process? That does bring to an end our work for the evening, and there being no further business to come before this council. We are adjourned on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Lewis.
We will return to your program after a short break. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067 or on the web at www.cvctv.org. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM. We now return you to your program. This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
... www.
Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Klinkhamer.
Here.
Larson. Lewis.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Tewalt.
Here.
Von Haden. Worthman.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July 14, 2015 Legislative Session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the items before us. We have prepared for this duty by working with citizens, by commiserating with staff, and by reading the considerable amount of materials in our packets. And we are prepared this afternoon to exercise our responsibility. We do welcome those of you who are joining us in chambers tonight and those viewing on community television, channel 994, or streaming live at cvctv.org. We have important items to take care of this afternoon, so let's begin with our, our work begins with the consent agenda.
Do councilmembers have questions regarding items on the consent agenda or wish separate consideration? Councilmember Lewis.
I would like to just hear a little bit more on the furnished snow and ice control. And then because I really love this event, maybe the Paul Bunyan logging camp, we could just have a little spiel about that.
I'm not sure if there's a chainsaw sculpture, we'll get to that second. Mr. City Manager, were you prepared for the snow and ice control question? Or you're designee?
No, I think I can, I'll try to answer questions.
Okay. Councilmember Lewis.
Sure. When I read, I was wondering why we were going to do less salt and if we felt that that was going to, what, we'd base that decision on?
No, I think that's a very good question, and I think I have some information that might help city council members. As you know, recently added a second salt storage facility. And right now, my understanding is that both facilities, identified as Shed One and Shed Two, are filled to capacity with a total right now of 3,180 tons of salt available. The contract is for 2,880 tons, so that would give us a total of 6,000 tons for the entire season, which should be more than enough. Of the contract that you have before you this evening, 480 tons is in reserve, so that means we don't have to buy it if we don't need it. The state has really reduced the amount of, or the quantity that we can have on reserve. Communities used to be able to have a lot more tonnage on reserve than what we can now, and they've changed those percentages. If the fall and early winter months of November, December are close to normal, we probably won't need to purchase any salt until January of 2016. So we have, we should have sufficient salt, and because we took delivery on last year's contracts, we are now at the maximum amount in our storage capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis also wanted to hear a little bit more about the U.S. Open Chainsaw Sculpture Championship at Carson Park, but I'm, Mr. Feber, are you versed to speak on that special event?
On the chainsaw?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. I think just a little kind of yea rah rah or something.
It's an event that has been run in the past. It's run in the, at the Paul Bunyan camp, and then also the sculptures are created in the parking lot of the Hobbs-Glynn softball fields. And I know that last year was the first year that they had alcohol, and they were allowed, it's been two years, okay, that they were able to expand their alcohol area, and we did not have any issues with that. And I would, I would guess that the police department would respond, that they've not had any issues with that expanded liquor license on their premise.
Councilmember Lewis might have an additional question.
So is this an event that they see growing again this year?
Oh, yeah.
So are there going to be more sculptures, and were there enough bidders for them at the end last year and anticipate that again?
As far as I know, I know the first year, we got, we got one down at Hobbs. We got, we got the hockey-playing bear. But, and I think that was because the public wasn't quite familiar with the event, but I don't think, I'm not aware of them having any trouble auctioning off their winning pieces at the end of the, at the end of the event.
Thank you, Mr. Feber.
Sure.
Would anyone else have questions on the consent agenda? There being none on a motion by Councilmember Klinkhamer, seconded by Councilmember Tewalt. The consent agenda is moved, discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Klinkhamer.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewalt.
Aye.
Von Haden.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
I do have one proclamation. This afternoon, we are going to help the Americans with Disabilities Act celebrate its 25th, it's an anniversary, and would ask Dr. Schneider to meet me at the podium. And entourage, I should have said. I'm right here on this side of you, so I'll be just reading a few sentences. And we have the dinosaur book ready to go, too. Dr. Schneider and Trup. On July 26, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of peoples with disabilities. And this legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. On July 26, 2015, we celebrate the 25th anniversary of the signing of the ADA. The ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life. However, the full promise of ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to our efforts to fully implement the ADA. Now therefore, the city council does hereby proclaim July 26, 2015, as the 25th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we recognize and want our citizens to celebrate the progress since 1990 and encourage us to reaffirm our commitment to work toward full ADA compliance and implementation. Dr. Schneider.
I salute you for recognizing this important civil rights legislation helping to eliminate architectural, communication, and attitudinal barriers for the 19% of people who live with disabilities. For me, in the last 25 years in the Chippewa Valley, I've noticed many improvements. Guide dogs are more easily allowed into the public places that they are allowed into by law. I get electronic copies of books, meeting agendas, city council packets, et cetera, ahead of time so that I can read up on what's going to be covered. Websites are more accessible, and when things on the city website have issues, I have good support from the IT department to make it accessible for people who use screen readers. iPhone apps are, that are designed to work with voiceover. For example, I'm just starting to explore your Double Map Transit app to see what of that is accessible. Weather notifications on iPhones and emails so that I don't have to be watching TV and hear beep, 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 and not know what's where. Braille menus, Braille greeting cards, print Braille books like the dinosaur books that I'm passing around for you to take a feel of, they're becoming more common. One store in Eau Claire even has talking pill bottles now, so potentially I could know what medicine I'm taking. Money identifier provided by our federal government so that I know this is a Dollar bill.
Here, I'll take care of that.
The Help America Vote Act is another piece of legislation, but I work with the city who are very careful that the handicap voting machines work so that I can vote independently. You who work with me to make these accessibilities are really the ADA. John Locke said, "The end of law is not to abolish or restrain, but to preserve and enlarge." As we begin working on the next 25 years of implementation of the ADA, let's be sure that the 19% of us with disabilities are at the table to help plan and that we go beyond just ramps and curb cuts to all kinds of accessibility for all kinds of people for the good life here in Eau Claire.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Where's your bomb? Where's my bomb? Where's your bomb?
You wanted to say, "Good job, Tim."
Where's your bomb?
Would you like to comment? I think you get one minute. You would like to talk.
I like your bomb.
Oh, you like my dog? Okay.
Another problem. Yeah, we all...
Where's your bomb? Where's your bomb?
Two dogs in chambers tonight.
Another very well-behaved dog in training is in the back of chambers, so we're happy to, and anyway, okay, to you, too. And thank you again, Dr. Schneider, for sharing your story, and for all the people who support you and gain inspiration from you. We do have other work ahead of us this afternoon, which we will get to immediately, beginning Item 12, which starts our business agenda with a resolution authorizing the Chippewa Valley Theater Guild to conduct the Rock and Run on Saturday, September 12, at Owen Park. Mr. Feber?
This is a first-time special event. It is being run by the, by the Chippewa Valley Theater Guild. And it is a couple different races. There's a 5K, and there's also a half, a half a marathon. And essentially, what they're doing is starting at, I'm not going to get my directions here. They're starting at the, by the Courtenhouse, by their facility, right across the street. And then there'll be a loop that will go down towards Carson Park, and then loop back around through the downtown area, back across the pedestrian bridge into Owen Park, and then back. So it starts and finishes, each race starts and finishes. The half marathon will be a couple loops, but they're essentially starting and ending at the Theater Guild. They have some events that are going on in conjunction with the Courtenhouse. And the West Grand Avenue District is very excited about this and, and other events. And the Special Events Committee reviewed this event and recommended approval. Waterways reviewed this event and recommended approval. They're, they are aware that they're going to have many bands located, as many bands as they can, at least three locations around the route. And they are aware of the city noise ordinance, that, that they're going to have to be respectful of that. I think that was the only, the only issue that we had. It's a very, it's a very non-conventional route, because it goes through the downtown area, and they had to work around the construction that we obviously have going on. But after, after reviewing it, we're very confident that, that this, this race will be very successful and safe. Any questions about, I don't think Anne is here today. Oh, there she is. Anne could answer any other additional questions about the event, too.
Would Ms. Sessions or any of her group like to talk about your event? We hope so. It's good for us to hear about new events and excitement in our city, so.
Sure.
Just a little story.
So the idea is to have not only a race that keeps you downtown, but to add that kind of music element, so add the drama, because of course, we're the Theater Guild, and so we'd want to add a little something to that. The bands will be at places not near residential areas. They're talking about adding some other music, like smaller music, just to encourage runners to go around. So idea is, instead of making people go 13 long miles, is to keep them looping within the downtown and that West Grand Avenue District. So a fun event here on September 12.
Thank you. And a fundraiser?
And a fundraiser.
Yes. Any questions for Ms. Sessions? I see none, but thank you for sharing your idea with us.
Thanks.
Seeing no further, no questions on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden. Item 12 is moved. Is there any discussion? There is none, and clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 13 begins a series of license application requests with a resolution granting a temporary expansion of a combination Class B license premise known as Giralamoe's Courtenhouse for the Rock and Run event, which we just approved. Mr. Hofer?
As, as you just said, this is a temporary expansion of an existing license for Courtenhouse in conjunction with the Rock and Run event. This operationally, some of you may remember, this expansion is operationally almost identical to the temporary expansion Courtenhouse undertook and was approved at a previous Eau Claire marathon. All the, they're going to have a beer garden that's only accessible through the restaurant. They'll have two bartenders inside and two bartenders outside. In addition to the, the beer tent area, there's going to be a separate fenced-in area with family entertainment and live music. Very standard expectations under these circumstances. No one under 21 is going to be allowed inside the beer area. They're going to, again, ID check people on their way into the, into that area from the inside of the restaurant. There were no objections to the granting of this license at license review, and I know the applicants are here if there are any further operational questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer. Indeed, I see no questions. And on a motion by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, the item is moved, and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 14 is a resolution granting a temporary Class B malt beverage and wine license to the UW Eau Claire Foundation for the Fifth Annual Gordy's Valley Spirits Uncorked Autumn Wine Tasting Gala, or Gala. Mr. Hofer?
This is a, is a application for a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and temporary wine license. This is a repeat event. I know it, it says Fifth Annual. My understanding is they've had similar events in addition to these five. Operationally, there isn't anything especially unique about this event. Standard expectations of temporary licensees, as you can see in your materials. One thing, because they are working with the UW Eau Claire Foundation, there may be some volunteers that are under 21, and they've assured us there will be steps taken, such as wristbanding, to identify who those individuals are, so they can keep an eye on them as well. But otherwise, the License Review Committee did not have any objections to this license application.
Questions for Mr. Hofer? Does your applicant wish to speak to her event? Councilmember Jean, a question?
Thank you. Just have a quick question. When you say temporary, it means one time, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just to clarify.
And we are, you know, as you've seen some past events, too, we're going to have more airport-related temporary applications this year, because we don't have a restaurant on-site that has a license. And so in the past, there may have been, the existing license holder would have been able to use their license for some of these kinds of events. And so we're, we've already seen some more of them, and we will probably, for the foreseeable future, continue to see more of these temporary applications at that site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does Gordy's want to speak to the event? Sorry. I missed you sitting there.
One other, one other comment, I'll make, too, just, you know, it's in the materials, but my understanding is that the proceeds are all going to go towards, to benefit the Confluence Project.
Any further questions? Or any question? I see none, and thank you, Mr. Hofer. And a motion then by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Councilmember Strobel. Item 14 is moved. Discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We have two more licensed to consider. Number 15, art, item 15 being a resolution granting a Class B license to the Eau Claire Ale House on Claremont Avenue. Mr. Hofer?
This is a surrender and transfer from the previous license holder to the new applicants. My understanding is, operationally, it's going to be almost the same. One operational note is that some of you may be, may have been aware that the Eau Claire Ale House had one of those self-serve taps with, where you buy, you get a number, and you can punch the number in, or you can get a card, and, and that was, that would be how your alcohol consumption was regulated, in addition to other supervision by those on staff. My understanding is that machine has been taken out, and that in, you know, kind of demonstrating the worthwildness of experimenting with it, it was so difficult for staff to use, and so difficult for it to repair. I've been told by the, the local tavern league, it's unlikely that anybody else in the area will use that kind of equipment in the future. But that's the only, and that's something that's, that recently they've taken out, but my understanding is, otherwise, operationally, it's going to be the same operation as would previously existed at the Eau Claire Ale House. There were no objections at License Review Committee to this surrender and transfer.
Questions for Mr. Hofer? I see no questions, and thank you. On a motion by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, item 15 is moved. Discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. The last item under license consideration is a resolution granting a permanent expansion of a Class B license premise to, premise of Pizza Plus. Oh, to expand their premise.
This is an application to expand the existing license at Pizza Plus. If you look at the, the diagram we have here, currently, the license covers this portion of the property, but not this portion on 204. The applicant has requested an expansion to, of the existing license to have a paint and sip at the 204 location. Business hours will coincide with, with the other business hours. It's not expected that this is going to be a high-density or high-traffic part of the license. One of the, the conditions we put are expectations on the license, is that they, right now, there is some ownership separation between the different units. The, one of the expectations is they would consolidate this into one single lot, and an expectation would be that if they do not, or at some point, if they sell any portion of the property or separate the ownership, that any expansion of the license would then be voided. So, in other words, right, they're asking to, to have the license cover this whole section of property. To the extent they ever sell any part of the property, that part will no longer be covered by the license. So there will only, only be allowed to have a license if there's one owner for the entire parcel. Other than that, very standard expectations. This is considered a less intense use. My understanding, it was, it was unanimously approved for a conditional use permit at the Plan Commission, and there were no objections at License Review to this expansion of the existing license.
Questions for Mr. Hofer? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. I had a question. So, so on Barstow Street, these have separate entrances, correct? Is there going to be a pass-through from, from the dining area into this, or are these actually two separate, two separate facilities, really?
If you look here on the diagram, there isn't going to be like a doorway from this facility, I'll step over here, from this facility to this facility. There's a hallway that can take someone from here to the, to the patio or to this party room, but there isn't direct access between the two. If that's what you're asking, like a doorway in between, on this wall.
Correct. Is, is that fairly common to use the same, to say, use the same liquor license for, for two separate buildings? I, usually, I thought they had a pass-through on them.
I don't know that it's, that it's common. It's certainly not unheard of. I don't know.
Mr. City Manager?
I think that's why, when we looked at this, you know, the unusual step of saying if the property's ever sold off, that it doesn't, the liquor license doesn't go with the property that's sold off. I think that's why you're seeing that separate provision.
And the same legal requirements for control of the premise are in place, whether or not there's a, you know, whether there was access between them or not. They're still required to control the entire license premise and take steps to do that.
I guess I was just wondering if there would be, how they would potentially be getting, I guess, maybe they have a separate alcohol in, in that premise, and they would be creating it back and forth on the sidewalk on Barstow Street between the, the actual bar and, and this new facility?
Well, I don't know if the applicant is here. I, I have some thoughts on that, but.
Answer questions. Sorry, what was the question?
No, the, the, you can connect in through the dining room, through the, through the patio from that space. So that'll be basically the only main way to kind of loop around, otherwise, is going through Barstow Street. So what you're asking, like, traffic-wise? So, yeah, it would be like leaving on one establishment to go to another, I guess, but kind of in the same sense of how the, the previously, the old bottle and barrel was one little hallway that connected the two establishments, but, so, and that liquor license kind of expanded all the way through. It's just basically the same situation, just replicated to the north.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Would, state...
Okay. Good boy.
Would, would customers be carrying, if they bought it in the dining room, could they carry it out to the other section?
Technically, they could. I mean, yeah, because it'll be all-encompassing in that sense. I mean, they wouldn't be necessarily be able to, we wouldn't, we're not really encouraging them to be able to do that. The patio is kind of a free-for-all for, in the sense of each establishment can enjoy the patio, but as it is, they're two different kind of entities.
Okay, but on the street side, up on the front street, isn't there a restriction on carrying an open container out on the street?
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to do that, only through like the back entrance and go through the back. Yes, yeah.
That was what I was asking. The front entrance, they couldn't carry it out because of the open container.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you. Mr. Hofer? If we approve this, the entire area that you have, or that's displayed there, would be covered with the expansion of this license?
Correct.
Okay. If the patio sells, then only the patio is no longer included in the expansion of the license. It would still be in that area facing Barstow. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And to, just even for everybody else, as we have met with the, or the assessor and got the paperwork, and that, so actually, they'll all be under one parcel number by, I don't know, as soon as that gets finished off. So, all three will be combined into one parcel number.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. This isn't really about your specific request, but for Mr. Hofer, if there was an alley between these two buildings, then would he need two licenses? What's, what's the criteria here, if that, it's because they're contiguous, or share a wall, or what?
Yeah, and I don't know specifically about an alley, but, you know, there are alcohol licenses, for example, in resorts that cover huge, you know, areas of land. You know, there was a court of appeals case, you know, a few years ago, on one in Wisconsin Dells, that was an enormous resort, and, and so there isn't, I'm, I'm not aware of, again, the public street issue is a little bit of a separate issue, but as far as the amount of space under one license, I'm not aware of a statutory limitation on that.
Councilmember Strobel?
Maybe on that, on that same train of thought, just a little bit, I'm thinking of Water Street where there's, there's multiple bars next to each other and if those came under the same ownership, even though the, would they, would they be able to just use one liquor license in those, in those situations?
Well, and part of that is a policy decision for the, for the city council, whether or not they feel that it's appropriate for one license to cover the particular piece of property, you know, for example, in this case where you have, you know, multiple units. As a policy matter, does the, does the city council feel that that's appropriate where, you know, there may be instances where you feel like it is and isn't, but it's not necessarily legally precluded, but more a policy decision for you to make.
And Mr. Haas, you said the, you're changing the ownership around on all of these, it's going to be under the same entity, is that what I thought I heard?
The buildings are already, all, already owned by the same entities. When, we were trying to do, I think it was more the point of trying to get all the parcel numbers, all the, under one parcel number, all three previous separate. At one time or another, there was one for 204, 206, and 208. So when we get it all done, they'll all be under 204.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we've answered our questions and thank you for accommodating us. And on a motion, then by Councilmember Tewalt, seconded by Councilmember Emmanuel, item sixteen is moved. Discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that resolution passes and brings to an end our license request. Our next item considers a site plan for a resolution approving a site plan in a P public to allow a ninety-foot, ninety-five-foot wind turbine at the CVC, CVTC campus. Councilmembers have questions from our presentation last evening? Any lingering questions? There being none, on a motion by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item seventeen is moved and discussion is in order. Councilmember Strobel?
I struggled with this initially, just because I'm not sure that the city's a proper place for a wind farm, but it didn't sound like this is going to be a wind farm, it sounded like a more of a learning experience for the students and I think as long as the, if they want to add additional windmills or whatever you call wind turbines to this, it comes back to the council for, for a decision, I think I'd be okay with that.
Another discussion.
Councilmember Mitchell? Thank you. I guess I have to disagree a little, I thought it was a good idea from the beginning, but the one thing that I learned at the Plan Commission, and maybe you heard this last night too, and if so, I apologize, was that the, not only are the students going to learn how to maintain the structure, but they're also going to collect data for the use of additional wind turbines in the Chippewa Valley. So I think that's an important aspect of, of this project.
We didn't hear that last night, so thank you for that insight. Further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tewalt?
Abstain.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Be exciting to watch that go out. I hope the students benefit. Item eighteen is a resolution approving an offer to purchase from Silvermine Stone Company for 2728 Davy Street. Mr. Schatz?
Good evening. A couple of months ago, we appeared before council and asked permission to put 2728 Davy Street up for sale by going through a request for proposal process. The building had been leased to Badger Custom Windows, city had owned it for about twenty-three years. Badger, the owner retired and sold the business, so the building became available. We did go out for those requests for proposals and received two back, they're included in your packet, one from John Peters Real Estate in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand and the second one was from Silvermine Stone Company in the amount of four hundred thousand. Comparing the two offers, the closing days were very similar. The Peters' offer was to close in seventy-five days, thirty-day contingency period and another forty-five days, or forty-five day contingency period and thirty days after that. The closing in the Silvermine Stone offer was anytime after September thirtieth, so very close there. Both offers were as, as-is condition, both offers did not require financing. The original, the city had got an appraisal from Norby and Associates, it came back at five hundred and forty thousand. Originally, the city purchased the building back in nineteen ninety-two for four hundred and fifteen thousand. We've received substantial rents over that period and far exceeded our purchase price with those rents. I will point out, in the purchase agreement, there is a typo. It is four hundred thousand, not the one hundred and eighty thousand that was written out. Staff recommends taking the Silvermine Stone offer for several reasons, but mainly it is also part of our redevelopment district in the West Bank. We have bought the building that they are in at eighteen oh seven Oxford Avenue. Our finance department has been searching and searching for relocation options for this company and it's been very, very hard to find. We have to follow all state statute requirements for relocations and such and depending on whether you can find a like building with like rents and such, we can end up paying more money depending on the type of property we find for them. So when you, when you look at the offers we received, you look at our other hand of the redevelopment authority and the expenses that might be incurred there, I think it is to the city's advantage to accept the Silver, Silvermine Stone offer. It's within ten thousand, but it saves us substantial money on the redevelopment side. It also retains a business in our community because if we couldn't find a spot in the community, they would have to move. There's fourteen jobs there, so that's the recommendation from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Schatz. Councilmember Von Hayden has a question?
I'm assuming what it says in here that they would relocate, do we have a signed commitment from them to relocate to this building and relieve us from some of those other obligations?
The redevelopment authority previously had taken up, once we purchased the building, we had to assume the lease for that building. We have a purchase agreement where they, they have agreed to buy the building, so we think that all of that is covered and we still have to follow all the state statutes for the relocation and everything, so monies that they are allocated for that will still have to be paid, but in the long run, this is, this is a good deal for the city.
But they wouldn't have to just say, we want to use that building for another purpose and opt to do that?
They, they, they need a location to operate this business and they are overjoyed to have this option. They are here today too and can, can state that, but, but they really, they know of no other building either that would be suitable for their use and this was, I think, kind of a gift out of nowhere that it came up at the time that it did so that we could, we could solve that issue too, but that, if they want to speak to that, they're, they're certainly available.
Thank you.
Mr. Schatz? Miss, Madam President, just quick clarification though, when we go through the acquisition process, there's technically a relocation plan to relocate and then this is part of that relocation plan, so there's a technical document to help answer Councilmember Von Hayden's question.
We have, we have met with them several times to go over all those elements and go over the plan, so they're well on board on that.
Councilmember Lewis?
In reading the proposal from the Peters Real Estate, they talk about a need for some growth maybe of some other businesses that are out there. If this location is not available for those other businesses to grow, is there something else out there for them or do we find a location for this company to stay, but we're at risk losing somebody else that's looking at expanding?
Well, the other offer, they had possibilities, but they had nothing for sure lined up, so there was no guarantee that those other potentials would have taken that building anyway, but, you know, there's always the risk that if these are other, if there are other growing companies and we can't find a building in Eau Claire, that they could go somewhere else, but, I mean, that's part of our job and certainly the, the developer that made the proposal is certainly working directly with them to find other options. So, as I, as I presented to you a couple of months ago, this is a very tight market for industrial. We, we do not have a lot of options in the city. We've been talking about spec buildings and other things too. We hope that when the Federal Express building is complete and gateway, that their building will be offered as a possibility to, to companies around here, so, yeah, it's, it's a situation we're monitoring closely because it's a very tight market.
Further questions for Mr. Schatz or the applicants? I see none. Do the applicants wish to speak?
Speak up.
Evening.
Good evening. We don't have a question for you precisely, but would welcome your input into our decision.
Well, the property on Davy Street meets our needs fairly well, it's got the loading docks we need. Probably one of the important things, it's in a heavy industrial area and we have big trucks coming and going and we don't, currently we're next to the children's theater and that doesn't really go together very well, so this is a good location for us. The Peters', you mentioned the Peters' application, having someone for, they called me and offered me to rent the building, so, not knowing that I was a bidder, so I don't know what that, their other person may have been, but it fits our location very well. I'm happy with being out there. We've got currently about sixteen jobs at this plant. We hope to add at least probably six more in the expansion in the bigger area on Davy Street. So, any other questions from anybody?
Apparently we don't, but we thank you for your insight in helping us-
Okay.
...about your move.
Thank you much.
You're welcome. And on a motion then by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Jean, item eighteen is moved. Discussion? There being none, clerk, please, oh, Councilmember Lewis?
I, I noticed it says they're buying it as-is, is there any additional money the city is going to be putting into the building or helping with the move outside of your standard relocation costs?
No, we do not anticipate that. When they first put their offer in, it was contingent on financing through the city, but they, they waived that, it's on the backside in your packet there, so, no, we don't anticipate any other costs.
Okay, there being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item nineteen is a resolution indicating receipt and review of the 2014 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Mr. Pipinger?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Compliance Maintenance Annual Report evaluates the wastewater treatment plant and collection system as required by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Grades of A through F are assigned to different areas of the plant and collection system operations. The overall grade for the Eau Claire wastewater treatment system was three-point-five-three out of a scale of four-point-zero. The Department of Natural Resources does not require action on maintenance activities unless the grade point average is less than a three-point-zero. The employees and the operators at the wastewater treatment plant and wastewater collection system are responsible for this excellent rating and are to be commended for achieving compliance with, with a discharge permit limits at a facility that is over thirty-five years old, and I might add, some of the collection system is well over a hundred years old, and also we're undergoing a forty million dollar upgrade at the time. The Department of Natural Resources requires the city council to adopt a resolution indicating receipt and review of this report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
When will the new plant be up and operational to take over for this one?
Good question. We're anticipating, right now we had a couple setbacks, but not major ones, but we're anticipating sometime most likely September, October, but well before the snow flies, I hope.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Jean?
Thank you. So, I look at that, you said three-point-five-three out of four scale, is that any pretty good scale or are they like average or what?
Well, it's a pretty good score, but I, I'm not satisfied with that. I'd like to see a four-point-zero, so we, we always strive to achieve that. Currently, if you looked at the, the report, we, we did have some struggles in our total suspended solids and that was primarily due to the construction that we were going through. We were transferring from one operation or process to another and our solids suffered for that, so that was the reason. And the DNR was well aware of that, that was most likely going to happen during our construction phase.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. So, well, congratulations, that's a, a good score. You got all As except for that one D, so if you look at it that way, it's, it's not so bad. And now that I've said that, I forgot what I was going to ask you. Anyway, congratulations, if I think of it and I may at all ask the question.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lewis?
Not so much on the report, but when the new system comes online, do you expect that it's an automatic increase in your scores or will we suffer a little bit or you suffer a little bit just in the turnover to a new system where then it'll have to catch back up?
I expect the, next year's report, I give you this report every year, next year's report will probably see another little blip on there because, again, during the process change, we did see some issues earlier this year. But after that, remarkably, when you come down there, you'll see that our effluent is just about as clean as that water in that, in that container. It's, it's very, it's very remarkable on how clean our effluent is. And again, that's putting that out to the Chippewa River and we're, we're doing our job for the environment.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you, I thought of my question. So, we're not required to respond with the score that we got, but, and there's also no requirement to respond to the, the TSS piece of it?
No. Again, what you're doing is just responding that you reviewed it, you received the report and the resolution saying that you did, it's, it's a requirement of the DNR. If, if there was an issue with the TSS, the DNR would handle that with the city as far as a, it's, it goes under a compliance schedule that we'd have to fix it, but we're putting forty million dollars into a plant that I think they're, they're going to be satisfied with that.
Thank you, Mr. Pipinger. I look forward to your report next year. Oh, Mr. City Manager?
I'm sorry, I thought it was on, I think Mr. Pipinger should be commended and he's being all too modest because there are a number of communities in Wisconsin that are below the three-point-zero-zero that have faced corrective actions, so I think while he's downplaying the, the three-point-five-three, I think he should be commended because there are a number of communities that are looking at and are faced with corrective actions.
Kudos to you, Mr. Pipinger.
Thank you very much.
Understood. And we thank you again, we look forward to your report next year. On a motion then by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Lewis, item nineteen is moved. Discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Thank you very much.
Understood. Let me thank you again and look forward to your report next year. On a motion then by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Lewis, item 19 is moved. Discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Our next action is a resolution appointing a council representative to the Transit Center Site Selection Advisory Committee. As you will see by your resolution on page 154, the Transit Commission was recently let an RFP to the Western Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to help it advise the placement of a transit center. Is that what you call it? Transit Center Site Selection. A new transit center would help the city improve its transit system, would address an aging building which is only serviced by a porta potty and cannot accommodate a growing fleet and has certain scheduling restrictions just because of its physical space, I guess, and the curbs are falling apart and a new site is probably warranted in our city. As I understand, this advisory committee would help the Transit Commission and ultimately the City Council make that decision for if and when we construct a new transit center. On the road to that, the Western Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, who's overseeing the study, wants to put together a citizen committee and they requested that a council member be on that committee. I think they would be one of 20 people, if I remember, something around 20 people? Does that sound right?
It's bigger than half the seats.
Or bigger?
Phil's hat, Phil knows.
So, it, bigger than 20?
Maybe even more.
Maybe even more, but it's a large and broadly representative community input advisory committee. So, tonight, our job is to appoint a person to that advisory committee, one of us. And you'll see on the resolution that we have what we're used to now is a sort of fill-in-the-blank thing, there's a blank line there. So, the chair would entertain suggestions or comments from council members who are interested in actually serving on the commission. And while it's hard to appoint yourself or to talk about yourself, we can all, we can do that, we know how, and we could hear from each of, any or maybe if any or more than one of you are interested in serving on this commission. I think they plan to meet three times over next year, I believe. So, the chair would entertain comments from members who are interested in being selected for this advisory committee. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a hard time talking tonight about this because I would be very excited to offer my service to serve on this committee. I am a passionate advocate for public transportation, not only for the people that ride it today, but also thinking about our future and what is going to be an appropriate site for accommodating our needs as we grow as a city and a community, thinking about, perhaps it's more than just a building, perhaps it's bringing people together, perhaps there will be amenities nearby that will serve the riders and potentially future riders and employees here in our community. So, I would offer my service if council would like to support me in that.
Is anyone else? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I'm also very interested in this and I don't look at it necessarily from a viewpoint of excitement, but more of a necessity. When I ran for council the first time, I talked a lot about, "We need to finish what we've started" and we started a transit system and we just really have not kept up with that. Having an old building that doesn't really have a working toilet is, it's sad, it's sad for our city and what we're trying to do. I think I bring some very unique experience and some education to serving on this committee. One, I have worked on citing buildings before, both here in Eau Claire and also in Madison. These were large groups with very different opinions on where these buildings should be. They needed to be open to the public, they needed access, they needed people to be able to get to them, they needed visibility, we had to know that people could find it. So, I worked on those things, some of those took several years. So, it's interesting to hear that we can get through this process in six months. However, I have served with West Central Regional Planning in a position I held in Halle, so I know they can get the work done. Another viewpoint that I bring is not necessarily that I'm the avid rider, but in becoming a certified aging and place specialist, one of the things that we really look at is not only your homes, but it is your communities and it is your transportation so that everyone can live independently for as long as possible and I think that's what we all want. And while I was in Seattle at the League of Cities, one of the sessions I sat in on talked about transit and we had a very large city who talked about how they designed this beautiful new transit system, they were so excited and they didn't understand what had happened to some of their ridership. Well, when they went back and looked at this, they had really not looked at the 50-plus and actually maybe even the older community of the 70-plus that really can use your buses and use your transit system. And I thought that that was very interesting because they had to spend some additional money after this whole system was put in to redesign. And I think that going through the education that I've been through, I want to bring that viewpoint, that we look at the new young millennials who want to ride this and not, aren't going to have cars maybe, and it's smart, I applaud them, but we also have a very extensive ridership that I would like to have represented on there. I think I bring a business background to anything planning, that you have to look way past the short term and look at the long term and where's the city growing, what other questions have to be addressed, be able to take a look at this as a very large picture and then boil it back down to some basics of what we can afford, what we can do for funding. I was thinking, maybe some people are going to be surprised that I'm interested in transit, but since I've been on this council, this is one of those things that I, my opinions have changed a lot since I got on council regarding this. And I look at how I've worked with others when we had the parking study, that that would look at, what are we going to do with the transit system? In looking at planning for a parking ramp, can we in some way have incorporated a transit center into that? And just even voting for the monies to be doing these studies and to be doing the sites, this is something I can really see us doing because we're never going to become the city we want to be and are planning for unless we can cover the bases with transit. And we have to be able to convince these people that it's safe to ride the bus, that you can take your kids and sit in the transit center and wait, that as an elderly person going home with shopping bags, you're not going to be worrying about things and that we've planned for you and we've thought about this and we've looked at it. So, I would ask for your vote if you were so interested. I bring maybe a little different viewpoint, having not been the avid rider that Councilmember Emanuel has been, and warn that passion so much more publicly, but I do have a keen eye and a real good intention that I want to serve on this and make sure we do it right.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Klinkhammer?
You can steal your beating hearts, I'm not interested in beating hearts. I guess my question would be, how earth-shattering would it be? Because we are obviously fortunate here that we have the choice between someone who has had an outspoken passion about public transit and alternative transit and someone with significantly more experience in site selection, et cetera. What would happen if we appointed two? Would it be, I mean, they each bring a different perspective to it and I think that the committee, if it's going to be 20-plus people, I think the committee would benefit from having both perspectives.
The, I'm just reading the letter that I received as an introduction and it does indicate in the singular, but I don't think that there would be a tragedy to appointing two people on what.
I would move that we put both names in.
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second to appoint councilmembers Emanuel and Lewis to the advisory committee. Councilmember Von Hayden?
I agree with Councilmember Klinkhammer. I think in this case, because of the transit center and the importance of the two positions that are presented by both people, I think their experience and their knowledge would be far superior to a lot of the other people in giving information to that committee. So, I think it's beneficial that they both be on there so that we get the positive viewpoint that we're going to need because one of the most important things that this decision, even though the big decision comes with the funding for it, the location and the method of where this is will make a huge difference to everybody in the community. And we all know that the transit system helps many of our disabled people, our elderly and our young people, and it would help everybody in the city that has need to get to their jobs. And if we're going to continue to have the growth in Eau Claire, and I think both council members that have expressed an interest in this would be extremely valuable to the committee.
And as luck would have it, in the bottom of 1, 2, 3, 4, paragraph 4, it says, "If you are not able to serve," as the letter was addressed to the council president, "please consider other members of your organization." So, we may indeed be adhering to the letter and the spirit of the invitation. Councilmember Strobel?
I would support that as well. I think we're really fortunate here that we, I couldn't say it much better than Councilmember Klinkhammer did, but that Councilmember Emanuel is a big supporter of transit and I believe Councilmember Lewis is as well. When Councilmember Worthman and I were bringing forth the parking study, I know she advocated for trying to study the site selection for that transit facility at that time as well. And so, I think this is a really, we're fortunate and I think it's a good idea if we can put them both on there.
Okay. As we have a motion on the floor, the chair would ask, the motion places both members on the commission advisory committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed. Two names go in the blank in the "Now therefore it be it resolved" clause, which is moved by Councilmember Von Hayden and seconded by Councilmember Worthman. Councilmember Von Hayden?
If we can just change the is to are after the two names along with that, it'll be helpful.
City Clerk is making note of that. For their discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on item 21. Councilmember Jeong?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that resolution has passed. And thank you both for your service. There are no ordinances for action or introduction this evening, announcements and directives are therefore in order. Mr. City? Oh, I missed one. Okay. Item 21, thank you for reminding me, is a resolution canceling, oh, yeah, we wouldn't want to miss this one. Canceling Monday, September 7th due to the Labor Day holiday. Mr. Van Gumpel?
Nothing more really to add with the exception that, and it is Labor Day and I think we'll make arrangements. If there is some item that needs a public discussion, we can do that prior to the Tuesday legislative meeting, but staff is trying to work around that and the reason we got the agenda item to you this meeting is to help get the information and word out and we can work around the scheduling. So, the resolution would just cancel the meeting for Monday, but we would still hold a Tuesday, September 8th meeting.
Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Jeong, the item is moved. Discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Councilmember Strobel?
Yeah, I have a discussion. Is there a reason we don't postpone the or cancel the Tuesday night session as well? I think we did this after, I think Memorial Day and it seemed like it was a very, very light Tuesday, which might not have been necessary and I guess I wonder what the thoughts are from everybody on that.
The Tuesday night meeting in fact is important this time of year, that we conduct business on an orderly and timely fashion approaching our budget season and all. We'll have items to address.
It certainly is a discretionary item. I know that this council has done both. Staff's recommendation for your consideration this evening was only Monday, thinking that there may be some legislative items and without having a Monday discussion period, hopefully that agenda would be fairly light.
But necessary. Okay. All those in favor of canceling the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed. And that does bring us to an end of our business for the evening, announcements and directives are now in order. Mr. Van Gumpel?
Thank you. The only thing I would like to cover this evening and call to your attention and apologize a little bit for the scheduling of the last or the initial CIP work session that was initially contemplated for yesterday. The current plan is to move what we would have done on the 13th to the 20th, July 20th. Next Monday is a special work session. I believe there's potentially two conflicts, I haven't heard from others, but, so if you can't make the 20th, please send me an email. And then, I would ask, have you put on your calendar a second capital improvement plan work session on August 10th? And I think there's one individual that has notified me that he will not be in attendance. So, if that, August 10th, doesn't work, please let me know as soon as possible. Our goal is to have the capital improvement plan adopted by the end of August on the 25th. So, the work sessions are fairly important and would like to have a majority of council members there. That's all I have.
Russ, do you have a time on that, August 10th, that we could ballpark?
We are anticipating 5:00 PM start times for both. The August 10th is preceding a regular Monday night session like we were going to do on the 13th.
Any announcements or directives? On a motion then by Councilmember Jeong, seconded by Councilmember Tewalt, this meeting is adjourned without objection.
This was a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council Meeting. This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support.